Really new for us. It was like first time when we felt happy.
But during our interview, there was a sudden interruption.
We have something, something's wrong. Someone just threw something like dirt over like doors and just ran away.
Eva had her suspicions. She says all three of them live in an apartment with many Ukrainian refugees. She wonders if the dirt was thrown because her parents are gay or because they overheard that they're talking to a reporter about LGBTQ rights in Ukraine.
It's so strange that we're speaking about like discrimination right now. And someone's throwing a dirt.
For this family, facing discrimination, harassment, and even violence because of Olena and Irina's identity is not new. We aren't using their last names for this reason. Anton Livedik is from Ukraine and is with Outright International, an LGBTQ plus advocacy organization. He says prejudice against LGBTQ plus members in Ukraine is very real.
I am happy that today in Ukraine discrimination is prohibited by law in the workplace and the media. But still, you may have neighbors who just hate you because you're LGBT.
Livedik says it's unsafe to be openly gay in Ukraine. He says it's especially risky in Western Ukraine, where many hold Orthodox Christian church beliefs. But this is also the region where Ukrainians are fleeing to. It's farthest from the Russian border and close to neighboring countries. When the war started, Olena, Irina, and their daughter Eva were in Poland on a work trip. But they left Poland because they felt it was even more homophobic than Ukraine. They then fled to Spain, where they shared a shelter with other Ukrainian refugees. Olena says some gave them a cold shoulder and even made them uncomfortable.
When we were meeting you people, both in Ukraine and in Spain, they would ask, you're from Ukraine? Where's your husband? And then I'm telling them that this is my girlfriend.
They didn't speak Spanish, struggled to find jobs, and felt unaccepted. They wondered if it would be safer to go back to Ukraine despite the war.
Let me say good afternoon to everybody. Welcome to the two o'clock session of Roanoke City Council for, uh, for the date of August 7th. I think there's some seats. Well, no, there not that many seats up here. Okay. All right, with that being said, I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll. Ms. Susan McCollum.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here and I call him as president. Today, our invocation will be delivered by Elder Milton Hardy Jr., who is the Associate Pastor of Greater Prior Temple Church. And following Elder Hardy's invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we just want to say thank you for just taking us here today. God, we realize that it is with great respect and honor that we stand here today, understanding that the decisions that we make on today will help us for a better tomorrow. And God, we ask you to bless all our leaders in the room. Bless them in their houses, bless them in their homes. As they make the decisions that are needed for these people of today, help their hearts, help their minds. We ask all these things in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I was inspired this week by the people who sung the national anthem at the Hall of Fame game there for a little bit. I was impressed with that. Let me know when you're ready on that CD. Okay. All right, we have some announcements today. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. And let me say, as I do every time that we meet, that this council wants citizens to come forward to serve on these boards and committees. You're the people that will help us as we go about governing the city. And that's so important. So please recognize or understand that it's easy to do just to access the city's website at www.roanokeba.gov to complete an online application. And you can also call the clerk's office, and they will help you walk through that process. But come on and serve. Be a part of making some decisions for the city. For the seventh time, all American city. So we look forward to hearing from you. And this is not only for the audience here, but those of you who are viewing on TV to do that, to step forward and be a part of it. You know, have that attitude, you know, if this change is going to come, I'm going to make it and I'm going to be a part of it. So we look forward to receiving your application. All right. Another announcement, I want you to know you better get your tickets quick because the mayor's annual State of the Cities address is, tickets are going very fast out there. The State of the Cities address is on Thursday, August 24th, at 2023 at 8:00 a.m. at the Hotel Roanoke in Conference Center. I'm pleased to see Brian Wells here. Brian's the manager over there. And hotel, this is a conference, the conference center. And we want to talk about where we are, what we've done, where we are, and what we plan to do in the future. So there's annual State of the Cities address on Thursday, August 24th at 8:00 a.m. And it shouldn't be no longer than an hour. So if you can, we'd like for you to attend. All right, the next order of business is presentations and acknowledgements and the recognition of the onboard Roanoke Regional Partnership. And I'm pleased to call on our city manager to present this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two, there's two recognitions today, and both of these are intended to highlight some of our younger adults in the community and some of the programs that we have in place to help them as they move forward. The first is onboard ROA or onboard Roanoke. And this is a, an effort by the Roanoke Regional Partnership, among many others, that actually is designed to assist those college students that are in our community or around our community, and really in a way in which to introduce them to all the things that Roanoke has to offer. So I think Julia is going to come up and kind of open this. We've got folks, I think, here in the room, joining us on Zoom. And then we'll go to the second one, and I'll give a little intro to that as well once Julia is finished with this particular presentation. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cobb. And thank you, Council and Mayor Lee, for the opportunity to discuss one of our talent, our region's talent attraction efforts with you today. Again, my name is Julia Boas, and I'm the Director of Talent Strategies at the Roanoke Regional Partnership. And I was very honored when Vice Mayor Cobb invited me to join you guys. He saw our full panel discussion where we had several members kind of representing all different types of people who participated in the program. And we newly relaunched this program after the pandemic for the first time in person recently. And it actually just wrapped up last week. It was an eight-week program. Since I began my new role with the partnership in January, I've made it a point to ensure that all of our decisions around talent attraction and perfecting our workforce systems in the region are based in real numbers and a true understanding of our workforce data and our regional demographics. While doing my research, one of the things I discovered was that less than 1% of students that graduated from Virginia Tech in 2022 came to work in the Roanoke region of Virginia upon graduation. That's not just the city of Roanoke, that's the entire region. Less than 1% of those students came to this region. So it was kind of funny, when I walked into the building today, I saw the big banner about, you know, Virginia being one of the best places to, that like had internships. And I think that that is great. And I did notice that the city of Roanoke themselves, as an entity, did do a great job having internships and opportunities for people upon graduation. And we actually had several of your interns in our program, and I think they really, really enjoyed it. But what I realized is that one of, is that many of our region's employers, they only want staff and they only want people who are here with three-plus years of experience. The problem is, is that once they graduate or while they're in school and they're learning about all the opportunities that they can go into when it comes to school and their career, you know, if they do those internships in another region or if they go to another place to be with an employer that doesn't require any experience, well, then they stay in those regions and they don't come back here. So that's why we've identified that there is a gap in our demographics of 18 to 25. It actually goes probably a little further into later twenties as well. And so these well-educated students, they're leaving the regions because they, you know, we don't have those opportunities for them here. They may return, you know, once they need some grandma daycare assistance later down the road. But we're doing two things targeted to address this topic specifically. We're working with the Virginia Talent and Opportunity Partnerships in conjunction with Go Virginia, which they're probably some of the people leading the way and notifying people of the internship day and making employers aware of the incentives and encouraging them to participate in internships. And so we're working with them to reach as many employers in our region with this messaging to make sure that they are offering opportunities for young professionals and folks as they graduate. And we also brought back what used to be known as our Summer Internship Program. We now call it onboard Roanoke or onboard ROA. So while we, while it used to be just for those interns, we expanded the program. And so now it offers opportunities for interns, remote workers, recent graduates, and young professionals, all working in the region between the ages of 18 to 25. They can join through their employer if their employer wants to sponsor them, or they can apply individually with scholarships. And we provided those scholarships for anyone who may need them. This year, we had 32 registered participants from diverse backgrounds, 30% of which were identified as non-white or identified themselves as non-white. And we had a variety of industries that joined the eight-week program as well. We hope to expand this program to 100, 150 or more participants, breaking them up into smaller cohorts to go through this program because it really creates that stickiness that we want to keep them here long-term. The participants receive eight weeks of NACE, which is NACE, they call it the National Association of Colleges and Employers, to develop their soft skills, which is also another area that we've heard from employers that they graduate, but they still aren't really that great at networking or communicating or some of those professional development skills. So we get them career-ready. And so that's another thing we're sort of taking off the plate for the employers. So if they're like, I'm too busy, I don't have time for internships, I don't have time to train these people on the job. Well, we're trying to take some of those efforts off the plate for them. So they do that training as well as just introducing them to the region's top amenities, which would include things like concerts at Five Points Music Sanctuary, the Treetop Quest at Explorer Park, Explorer Park, a flotilla on the Roanoke River. We get, we experience dining, arts, breweries, all the things that are important to people ages 18 to 25, sports. You get the picture. We want them to have fun here and we want them to make friends more than anything. The value of onboard to the community was evident as we went through the process, and it strengthens the region's workforce. It cultivates a sense of belonging for them in the area, which is one of the biggest things that a lot of young people lack when they first get to somewhere new, and it promotes engagement with local businesses. But I was lucky enough to have a couple of the folks that did the program with me here today. One, who you'll see on the screen, Ms. Coriana White. She was visiting for the region as a summer intern, and she actually took time out of her day, out of her move-in day back to college in Atlanta. And we also have a young professional, you can come on up here, Mr. Victor Rosado, who is already a young professional living and working in the region. But he didn't know a lot prior to the area, about the area prior to moving here. So I'll let them tell each a bit about themselves, where they're from originally, where they're in school, working, what led them to participate in onboard, and also tell you what they found most valuable in the program and how it's changed the perception of what living and working in the region could look like. So hopefully we'll maybe have time for a couple of questions of them afterwards. But let's start with Ms. Coriana because she is, she's trying to move into college right now. So we'll let her unmute and then tell you a little bit about herself.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Before speaking a little bit, I'd genuinely like to thank each of you who are in the audience, especially the city council members, the members of Get to Know Broke, onboard ROA, and Ms. Julia, especially just for this opportunity today. I'm really grateful for it. My name is Coriana White. I'm a rising sophomore honor student at Spudman College, which is located in Atlanta, Georgia. I majored in political science and I had a double minor in Spanish and management organization. To give you a little context, I'm originally from Miami, Florida as well. This summer, I had the privilege of interning at Carillion, which is located, as you know, all throughout pretty much Southern Virginia and more specifically Roanoke. And I had the privilege of also partnering with onboard ROA. I would definitely say that it was through this program that I really got to see Roanoke in a different way. Onboard ROA blessed me, not only in that it provided me with a social experience, but also a professional development one. And as someone in college, it is extremely pertinent to be provided with those opportunities. There were many times in which we would go and explore the area by tubing, for example, on the river, I remember being on a zip line for the first time, which is an amazing experience. But I would say in addition to just being able to explore the naturalistic, I guess, aspects of Roanoke, I was able to create a community, a community of people who were of the same age or demographics or different demographics of me. It pushed me to grow. And I think that that's one reason why I'm extremely grateful for this program, is that it allowed me to really explore myself, explore my interests, and it allowed me to do so with individuals who, again, are similar in age to me. I would say in addition to that, it provided me with the opportunity to meet local professionals. And I remember even going to the collective, and we got to do a blacks and tech seminar or discussion style. And it was really great because we were able to network with some of the professionals in the area who are entrepreneurs or who may be working at a local tech company as an accountant. And it was just really cool being able to see how diverse a professional area can really be, even though it may be tech, and being able to see how I could potentially add to that as someone who, again, is looking for professional development. And I would say that it was because I had those experiences that I really got to see Roanoke for what it was. Again, I'm from Miami originally, and then now I live in Atlanta for school. And as you know, that those are both two different areas in comparison to Roanoke. But just being here allowed me to see the beauty of it. I got to see how quaint, how beautiful, and how extremely diverse Roanoke is. You can do so many things. And that's one reason why I'm grateful for this program. It showed me that although Roanoke may not be talked about as much, it's still a beautiful place. And it allowed me to explore that and it allowed me to appreciate that. So I'm extremely grateful for the individuals who facilitated this program because, again, you guys provided me with an outlet to go outside, to engage with people. And I wouldn't have been able to do this had I not had this program, especially as a 19-year-old teenager exploring the area by herself. I wouldn't have gone hiking at Dragon's Tooth or things of that nature. So I'm extremely grateful because you guys pushed me out of my comfort zone and provided me with the community of individuals, and you aided in my success. Thank you.
Coriana, I'm proud to say I took her on her first zip line, her first hike, and her first river float, all in an eight-week period. And I remember one of the things you told me, Coriana, was you were staying alone, you know, at a, at a sort of a dormitory-style thing provided for you. And she was like, I wouldn't have probably met anybody this summer if I wouldn't have had this program. And so she was able to make a little group of friends, and they would text each other and do stuff on their own time as well. Do y'all want to ask questions of Coriana? Or do we want to go to Victor and then maybe do that? Okay, come on over, Victor.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, you can. Just appreciate you guys all having me today and Julia for allowing me to speak in front of everyone. So I come from a little bit different kind of situation than Coriana. I am originally from Virginia Beach, Virginia, born and raised. I went to school at James Madison University. Go Dukes. Yeah, and I graduated with a degree in marketing and a concentration in digital marketing in May 2021. Following graduation, obviously, was looking for a job. But, you know, as most people do, I feel like looking in DC, Nova Area, Charlotte, back in Virginia Beach, Richmond, never even heard of Roanoke, to be honest. So I saw an application on LinkedIn for a company here, a digital marketing agency, and they allowed me to come out and kind of experience downtown Roanoke. And I've been at Lead Point Digital for two years now. Just hit two years on August 2nd, so been in Roanoke for two years. I actually, first year, I lived in Daleville because I had, I had no clue, you know, I had no clue anything about Roanoke. And it was, it was an interesting experience. It was just really hard to meet people, especially being out there for me. So I think onboard Roan, if onboard Roanoke was a thing when I first came, you know, it would have been way easier to meet people my age, kind of like Coriana said, and to experience all the different things that Roanoke has to offer. Even being here for a year and a half before I started the program, I never heard of this Treetop Quest or I'd never been to floating or I've never even thought of doing Dragon's Tooth by myself. But I will say I was a little bit skeptical coming in because I felt like I was a bit, I wasn't the right audience in terms of, I felt it was more towards internships. But once I actually got into the program and, you know, got out of my comfort zone, I really realized that, wow, there's a lot of great skills that these people are offering for, luckily, I was one of those that got sponsored, so for free for me. But, you know, a sponsorship from Get to Know Broke and the partnership. a sponsorship from Get to Know Roanoke and the partnership. So I've learned just so many soft skills that really have solidified kind of where I am at work, and just this allowed me to go to my boss and talk to him about kind of like our different personalities and how we can communicate better. You know, we also had a session on networking in general, and then there was a networking event right after at the Star, and it was cool to kind of take the ideas that they gave you and put it into action right then and there, especially in a safe space with other individuals kind of my age. So, you know, I think to summarize it all and to wrap it up, I completely recommend this program to anyone who's, especially an intern, to kind of experience the area, but also to the people kind of like me who have just moved here and don't know anybody and doesn't know really all the stuff that Roanoke has to offer. So, you know, if there's a way to kind of spread the message and get this out for the young professionals and interns and, you know, recent college graduates to kind of join this program, and you'll really love Roanoke, you'll fall in love with it. So that's kind of all I have.
As always, my panelists outshined me. When I had five, it was really great to hear all of their varied perspectives, and I think one of my big takeaways, other than we're doing it and it's working, was that we were sending off these 32 ambassadors out into the world to tell our story and to tell our messages for us because it means a lot more, as you just heard, coming from them than it does from me. So we hope to continue growing this program and making it a value-add for our employers, but also developing an excellent workforce for the future. And yeah, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them as best we can.
Last round.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming. I heard the panel at the last investor update that the partnership does, and I'm trying to remember how often you do the investor updates. Are they quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. So if you get a chance to go, they're really inspiring, not only in terms of programs they're working on and talent attraction and retention, but just a great overview of the economy in the region and where we're seeing a lot of growth. But as soon as the panel started, well, even before that, I thought, this should all be recorded, this should be a commercial for our region because your voices were so unique and powerful and funny and challenging. And I don't know how much time you had to practice or if it was all off the cuff, but it was really inspiring, and so I'm really glad that you could be here today and experience Roanoke in this special way.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Questions?
Thank you all.
And I did want to say, thank you guys as well. I know our interns, as Julia mentioned, several of our interns that worked through the summer here were able to participate in, and they definitely ranked it as one of their highlights with it, so definitely doing what it's supposed to do. And thank you guys for taking time out of moving as well as coming in here and sharing your stories.
Good seeing you again, Coriana. Good luck at school.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure. Bye. Thank you.
The second presentation is slightly younger, so we're going to step down into high school. And so this is actually from our Culinary Arts Boot Camp. I had the opportunity on last Friday, actually, to attend the graduation of the second cohort. So what we're going to talk today is actually from the folks from the first cohort. So these are students in our local high school. This is a partnership involving many that you'll hear about here in just a few moments. And so I think Josh, Josh is going to kind of start us off with a video that sort of highlights what this program is all about, and then we'll hear from some of the folks that are involved in this.
This summer's inaugural Culinary Arts Boot Camp provides our students with hands-on experiences as they explore their interests and learn about the hospitality industry.
So it's been a very intensive five-day, well, four days of lots of different cooking skills, lots of different items we're cooking, lots of different categories of food. We've done some baking, we've done some meat cookery, starch cookery, or what they call farinaceous cookery, and we've done some vegetable cookery as well.
My teacher had asked me did I want to come to culinary class one day, and I'm like, hmm, culinary class sounds fun.
Each day, you could see them progress a little more, and each day, they got a little more excited, like, what are we doing tomorrow? Oh, we're going to do chickens. Oh, we're doing chickens tomorrow, you know? So I've really seen a lot of enthusiasm. Honestly, they're much more enthusiastic than I was expecting, so it's been very nice.
This week, I learned how to make a lot of cool stuff. I knew how to make fish. I never cut raw fish before, never cut chicken before, so actually, I've been doing a lot of cool things too this week. The risotto is my favorite one. I love the risotto. I feel like the parmesan, when they add the parmesan on top, that just gives it the final touch, like, maybe it's about to cut this very quick.
So they're learning teamwork, they're learning soft skills, you know? And some kitchen lingo, like, when you turn the corner, you say corner, when you walk behind people, you say behind, when you carry a knife, you tell them sharp, and these kinds of things.
I learned how to work with a partner, my partner in there, Markis, he's a very good help. I also learned how to measure stuff. I was very bad at measuring.
Strong partnerships with local community organizations, higher education institutions, and businesses are vital to ensure our students can gain the skills and experiences that will benefit them for a lifetime.
Chef Z would help everybody by everything, because me, I made like, what, two mistakes? And he was just like, "It's okay, you know, keep going." So if you come here and you decide to come here, just be confident, keep going, and just be yourself.
We know that when our students are connected to productive and meaningful activities, they stay safe. And I'm so grateful for the partnership that is allowing our CPS to expand our Stay Safe by Staying Connected program offerings. We are so thankful for our partnership with Virginia Western Community College, the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center, and the Virginia Restaurant, Lodging, and Travel Association.
I'm so excited to make that stuff for my family, like, because I went here, so I'm ready to go show them, like, I've got some cool stuff I can make for you guys.
Thanks for having me here today. As you can see by the smiles on these students' faces, we came up with this concept to do a culinary arts boot camp. It's been about nine months, and really, we're looking for ways to assist Virginia Western Community College to do outreach through the culinary arts facility at the Claude Moore Institute. And I'm on the Virginia Restaurant Travel Association. I'm the president of the local chapter for Blue Ridge and New River Valley, and a committee member for curriculum advisor for Virginia Western on the culinary arts program, and had identified that the facility was vacant every Friday, and of course, and in the summer too. So we decided that we wanted to come up with an initiative to bring students that may not be in the culinary labs at the high school level to have an opportunity to see what a top-rated and designed commercial kitchen looks like. So Chef Z, myself, and Josh got together and were able to come up with a curriculum and a format that would work. I started out with Vice Mayor Cobb at the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, talking about ways to provide some skills to local students with unique opportunities where they could get employment, and it kind of led into this partnership, which was fabulous. So we're thrilled to be able to bring it to reality. I, myself, am a graduate of a culinary high school program, so you can really go anywhere with these type of skills and these opportunities when they're put in front of you. We made partnerships with Brian Mann, enterprise manager here with the city. He had some funding with his management partner, SP Plus, and Hotel Roanoke has an event to raise money annually. We put that money to work with this program, so we were thrilled to do it. But Josh has done a lot of the heavy lifting.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, city council members, city manager Bob Cow. I'm Josh Johnson, youth development coordinator and intervention for Roanoke City Public Schools. It brings me great pleasure to be here today celebrating this remarkable achievement. Like Brian said earlier, it wouldn't have happened without our community partners, that's Virginia Western Community College, as well as the Virginia Restaurant, Lodging, and Travel Association, Hotel Roanoke and Conference Center, and Park Roanoke. Your unwavering support and commitment have truly made a difference in the lives of these aspiring culinary professionals. But let us not forget the true stars, our graduates, our students. They worked hard, they dedicated themselves, it was unwavering passion to get through this program. We called it a boot camp because it was their first year of Virginia Western condensed into one week. So they worked very hard. So we had 11 high school-age students complete this one-week class, two cohorts. They then left with a Safe Serve Food Handler Certificate, which gives them a strong foundation and competitive skills if they choose to seek employment in the culinary hospitality industry. So we actually have two of our students here today that went through our first cohort, Ariana and Anaya, that would like to talk about their experience of the program.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Arianna Lynch. I am a rising sophomore attending William Fleming High School. Today, I would like to talk about my experience in the Culinary Arts Boot Camp. One of my favorite experiences was learning how to scale and cut a whole chicken into chicken parts. Another one of my favorite experiences was touring the Hotel Roanoke. Chef Z was very knowledgeable and taught us a lot. I even earned my Safe Certificate in one week. Overall, I am grateful for the experience and this opportunity that was given to me. Even my family enjoyed eating the food that we prepared on the last day of camp. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, city council, and city manager, Mr. Cow. My name is Anaya Hicks. I'm a rising 10th grader at William Fleming High School. I was a part of the culinary boot camp this summer, and I would like to tell you about my experience. When the first day came around, I wasn't sure if I would be interested in the boot camp, but when I got into the class, I was shocked by how much we learned and was excited about the next day. With this class, I learned so many things about cooking, working in the kitchen, and how to handle food. Chef Z made the class a very fun experience for me, as well as the others. I remember the last day of boot camp when we had to serve our guests the food we cooked. It made me feel good seeing all the smiling faces when people saw and enjoyed the meal. We got so many compliments about how delicious the food was. If anyone were to ask if it was worth it to participate in the program, I would share with them to keep an open mind and desire to learn about cooking. Thank you.
That was definitely one of the highlights, was the food. I think I ate my body weight in omelets. So I just want to thank again our students and our families for really buying into this program and our community partners. They took a great investment into their future, and we're looking forward to future opportunities like this. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming.
Let me just say before you go, Josh, thank you for your commitment, and Brian, thank you for making Hotel Roanoke available and the experiences that some of our people have gotten down there. Thank you so much. And I can tell everybody, we had a tour of the schools, the day tech, it used to be Ruffalo, but it's a day tech school now. This is just the beginning. I mean, you're going to see some things or hear about some things that's preparing our students to really go and do some tremendous things in the culinary program. So I'm excited about what the future holds, but thank you all for coming together, communicating, and sharing and making this happen. We appreciate that, and it's only going to benefit our young people. And that's the good news that we want to talk about Roanoke. That's the good news. And I see Jeffrey Powell back there, he's worked with working with programs, internship programs, and people working places, and there are a lot of people that have come together. So I'm proud to be the mayor of a city where we all work together and share things and make it happen for our future. And that's what we saw today, our future. And so I appreciate that. Thank you all so much. All right, Ms. Mullins?
I just wanted to just say something. A good idea based on what Brian, Mr. Wells, and what Josh Johnson said, but I have to admit, I was salivating looking at the food. I was, and I just want to know, where did the rolls go? Where did those rolls go? Those big fat yeast rolls was really good.
Yeah, they were actually, they were actually really, really good biscuits.
Oh, those are biscuits? Oh, biscuits. I'm sorry, I was imagining rolls. But I did, just wanted to know who was being served the food that you all were making that they seemed to enjoy preparing.
Yeah, so every day, they learned a new skill, worked with different food, and at the end, we got to invite dignitaries and friends and families. So that was kind of the end to it, and so it was like a catered meal. They served the first cohort, about 40 individuals, second cohort, about 35. And so they prepared everything, took all those skills, and then did it again on Friday.
Do you have a third cohort coming?
I hope so.
I want to be one of the friends.
That's the plan.
Your dignitaries. We want to make sure we're at the table.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. You will get that in the beginning.
At the table.
And I can assure you that the biscuits and the brownies were good.
Oh, the brownies too? I didn't see the bread. Now you're telling us, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Anybody else? Thank you, thank you, Josh. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Hearing of Citizens upon Public Matters, and the city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And I'm hoping that everybody who plans to speak have signed up. So Madam Clerk, do we have?
Yes, we have a number of speakers. These speakers, some will speak on the Climate Action Plan, and the others will speak on Washington Park, but we do have them all in this section of Hearing of Citizens. So I can go ahead with the names if you'd like.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The first speaker we have is Frida Cathcart. Oh, there she is.
We're doing three minutes each.
Three minutes each, yes.
Hi, I'm here in my role as the District Director of Soil and Water Conservation, and I want to emphasize the conservation part of that title, and how important I think it is in 2023 that we take advantage of all conservation efforts. And that's what I wanted to bring back to your attention, the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation grant opportunities that are available right now. Over $14 million is available in funding, over $2 million in funding for historic area preservation, over $2 million in open spaces and parks presentation, preservation, and over $4 million in natural area preservation. And there's a reason why these monies are available. It is to encourage localities to look at what they can do to be resilient when it comes to flooding. I don't know if you all had paid attention to what happened to Lynchburg recently and southeast Roanoke and Vinton. The weather's become unpredictable, where we get these dumps one place and not another. So we have to take advantage of these opportunities so that we are resilient and we prevent flooding. So I wanted to let you know, at the end of June, at the end of July, I took it before our board, the Soil and Water Conservation Board, because we're one of the entities that could funnel this money through. And the feedback I got from the board was that we're happy to assist in helping the city apply for funding, but we don't have the staff to implement the program. We only have four staff people that covers four counties. So we can't implement a program, but we can help with the processing of it. The staff could help with the processing of it, we could help with bringing the money through us and then to you. When we talked about the Parks and Recreation Board, the urban forestry, about working with them and the tree stewards, like with the Urban Conservation Corps. But I'll be honest with you, right now, with everything I have on my plate, and this is a volunteer position, it's an elected position, but it's volunteer, and I'm trying to do the best I can to connect the dots and to put people together. I did hear from Michael Clark, because I sent like the information out to a lot of y'all, as well as a lot of other people, like, hey, this opportunity is out here. y'all as well as a lot of other people, like, hey, this opportunity is out here. But you have to apply. And the only person I heard back from was Michael Clark, who said that he'd send it to his staff, but then there's been no follow through. So we have eleven days before the deadline, August 18th, for it to happen. So I just wanted to bring this back before your attention and say, I think at Roanoke really, like, these are competitive things, but I think we have a lot going for us to be able to qualify to bring that money home. And I would like to connect the dots to make it happen. So however that can be, I hope it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker?
Ms. Cathcart, I just wanted, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that our instruction was to refer it to the City Manager, because we cannot apply for grants here on council, and I think most of us understand that. And I understand that you did do that, is that correct?
Yes, the reason Michael reached out is because we asked Michael to take a look at the grants.
Right, so that...
Yes, he and his staff have been reviewing those grants and they are advising us to whether or not those grants align with what they believe that they need to be working on, and also all of the grants that have been referred to have a match attached to them too, so we have to evaluate that piece. So yes, that's what he's, that's the reason he's looking at those.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to reiterate that to Ms. Cathcart, so she would understand that we have referred it and this is a protocol. So hopefully, Michael will be getting back to you to let us know whether we can or cannot. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Just piggybacking on that, if I could, Mr. Mayor, is there a timeframe, a deadline? She mentioned the deadline. Will you be getting back with her within that time period?
Yes, so Michael, just so, just so council knows me, the initial assessment from the park staff is that the grants that have been identified are not grants that we, that would be appropriate to pursue at this moment. What we're doing in the City Manager's office now is reviewing that assessment and determining whether we agree with that or not. And then we'll follow back up with them on that information. So that will happen this week.
Thank you. So she could expect the follow up then? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Leon Venti.
Your Honor and members of the council and the public here as well. My name is Leon Vincy. I reside at 1912 Arden Road here in town. And as a former public health official for over twenty-five years, I have served on local committees to protect public health as well as the environment. At present, I am a member of the National Environmental Health Association and the American Public Health Association Committees on Climate and Health. And we have positions from both those national organizations about the importance of climate and health issues, and I helped co-author those. As well, locally, I have tutored at Virginia Western and sit on their scholarship board for the campus. Just three days ago, I was in New Orleans at the International Educational Conference of the National Environmental Health Association, participating in part on climate issues and presenting to the group as well. My interests are very high, as you can imagine, on climate, on our health and on our environment. Today's item before you, although I did not specifically see it on the agenda, nor did I see the date for today's meeting, just an FYI. Today's item before you, the Climate Action Plan for 2023, as you know, follows the 2015-2019 Climate Action Plan approved for the city of Roanoke. Both are well-written, science-based, community-focused, and timely. And I want to emphasize timely because the time is not so much now as it was. It was needed more than a decade ago, but nonetheless, our actions are a step forward and we need to do that. Please approve this document and remember one thing. It is not meant to just be another report accomplished and signed by this council to be put on a shelf in Roanoke government somewhere. It needs to be chalked, nor chalked up as one more business item. It demands action and support. Action by walking the walk with initiatives and interventions, not just words, we're going to do this, we have to do this, whatever those initiatives, interventions are, such as maybe a strong tree canopy program, white roofing, you know, the list goes on, and I'm sure you're familiar with them. Not only action, but support. Add budget dollars to the climate support team. Address the street lighting, and I know it says in the report, we're going to address street lighting and other initiatives that are, that make a step forward. Let's do that. And let's not wait or talk about it. As well as more uses of renewable energy. Thank you, and if you ever have any questions or comments, I'm glad to help out.
Well, if you had a finishing paragraph, you could go ahead and do that.
Okay. It's, remember, human health is dependent upon our planet. A sick planet will sicken us. Thank you.
The next speaker, Darnell Wood.
Madam Clerk, can you, if they have it listed, could you tell us what area they're coming in to talk about?
Sure. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, City Council and Mr. Cow. I'm here to speak on behalf of a meeting that was held at Hill Street Baptist Church in May. Reference the Washington Park pool, the Evans House, and so on. Much to my surprise, I did find a flyer was sent to me relative to the Evans House. I guess I'm asking you, we need to stop kicking the can down the road. Either let's make a decision, if we're not going to do anything with Evans House, let's be done with it. I've been there, I've seen the deplorable condition it's in, the roof is falling in, I've seen pictures of the floor, the plastic is off of it now. You can see the Evans House for what it is. Don't let us not, let us not sit here today or any other time and let's compare the Evans House to the Washington Park Pool. They're two separate entities. I did see the flyer, and there's some misinformation in the flyer that was put out. And I'll just read one thing, history of the Evans House. The last sentence, since 1923, families occupied the house and took care of the park and grounds, not the city. Well, I know the family that was in there the last time I was there, that gentleman was paid by the city. If you're going to put something out here, let's put the truth out here. You know, and I applaud them for wanting to sign a petition and keep the petition going, but let's face it, that house in the deplorable shape, I don't know where they'll find the funds, maybe somebody got thirty million dollars or forty million dollars to go out and tear it down and build it, but let's be realistic, we got more important things than the city of Roanoke. That money can go out to some other places, satellite police officers and things to help some of the real serious issues we have here in Roanoke. The pool needs to be put in place. They told us what was going on, the meeting was held at Hill Street, and I'm kind of sick and tired of having meetings just to have another meeting to kick it down the road. There was probably a well-attended meeting at Hill Street, but you know, we have to really sit down and make a conscious decision, hey, let's stop. Because every time you turn around, when someone don't agree, let's sign a petition, let's do something else. And in all honesty, you know, the kids over in Northwest don't have anywhere to go this summer. I do go by Fallon Park, and it is full. Black, white, Hispanic, whatever, it is full. We need that additional pool, but we can't keep kicking it down the road. And as far as the monies, I know my time is short, and I say this, don't tell me to delay it this year, it won't cost you more next year, because that is falsehood. And if I'm ruffling some feathers, I apologize. But we really need to start thinking about what we're doing in these communities. Evans House, believe me, we know what the Evans House is and what it was, but to put monies in the Evans House, if someone out in the audience got a million dollars to give you all, I'm all for that. But I'm going to tell you, we need to really think about what it is. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just...
Yes, sir.
And I know we'll talk about this later in the briefing, but just to make sure everybody's clear, so I believe that the flyer that Mr. Wood was talking about is a flyer that was distributed out in the community by the community, that's not a city flyer, so I just want to be clear on that. And also, to be clear, after that meeting that Mr. Wood referred to and after council direction, we have indeed proceeded. So the reason the plastic was removed was so that our consultant could look at the structure, start their measured drawings in preparation for demolition, and engineering work, design work is underway for the pool to go in the location that was talked about at that meeting. So I just want to be clear, though there is, again, community discussion going on, our action continues forward based on direction from the council previously. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager, Ms. Cow. It's almost, and I attended that meeting at Hill Street that night, and when I left that meeting, I felt, given all the work that had been done, the train had left the station. So I appreciate you sharing that, and that's what we got away from the meeting. Ma'am, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ricardo Stovall, and he will be speaking on Washington Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, citizens. Hope everyone's doing fine today. I come as a concern, citizens, about the, Washington Park has a deep history of swimming. I used to swim in the Royal Garden years ago, and it's just such a great experience. I'm a swimmer anyway, so I swim five days a week. But anyway, to not have a swimming pool in the black community is devastating. All kind of things can happen for a lack of a swimming pool. And just to preach to the choir, Dreamland used to be there, it was a rec center. My mother, Helen Davis, used to tell me that she would go there, you know, dance, swim, have a good time. It was a gathering place, and it was fun. And the city of Roanoke in the 1950s used Washington Park as a municipal dump. I used to walk across the dump going to Addison High School my freshman year, and the fumes and the smell, you could smell it in the school. Okay, that was closed in 1963, and when the pool was eventually covered up by the dump. Okay. And to go back to the caretaker's house, from my recollection and reading, it was built in 1840. Gainesville was chartered in 1835. Big Lick became the city of Roanoke in 1882. So my math says that this house was forty-two years before Roanoke became a city. And growing up, there are so many places that are not there anymore in the black community. And I see this as a part of, I don't know what's in effect right now as far as demolition or trying to do it, but to have a swimming pool on that lower level, I don't think that's feasible because of the Orange Avenue traffic and people trying to get there. And in closing, I'd just like to say, downtown on the market, this plaque is up, and it says, "Preserve America, Explore and Enjoy Our Heritage. Welcome to Roanoke, a preservation American community." So how can we preserve our history when we're turning down and demolishing? Thank you.
The next speaker is Justin Miller, and he will be speaking on Washington Park Caretaker's Cottage.
If you type "history of Roanoke, Virginia" into the front page of Google, it says the following. Known as the capital of the Blue Ridge and a crossroads for commerce, the city of Roanoke's history began in the 1740s. Mark Evans and Tazka Tosh came from Pennsylvania and took up land near the Salt Licks where Indian and animal trails crossed in the center of the valley. Mark Evans, the Evans family, one of the first original settlers to this area. The last name was popping up a lot when I started doing my own research when I became infatuated with Roanoke's history. The Evans House hadn't been on my radar beforehand because it was covered up in plastic for almost all of my youth. It looked like it was being bug bombed by exterminators. And while the reasoning for why the plastic was put on is foggy, it did keep it hidden in plain sight very well. That is the opposite of what it should be. This property should be on a pedestal for Roanoke's history. If Roanoke had a guided history tour, which it should, this cottage should be the starting point. A cottage that belonged to the family of one of our first settlers, the family that started the mill that we named Mill Mountain after, the family that started, that first used Crystal Spring. We're lucky enough to have a piece of that, and knocking it down would be an incredible and heartbreaking disservice to the current and future generations of Roanoker's. The records will show that the city and whoever makes this decision chose to demolish down this historical gem to replace it with something that is a bit temporary, like a pool. And the future generations of Roanoke are not going to be thanking for that. As somebody who truly cares about this city and would love to assume that you all do as well, all I can ask is, how can we knock down such an important part of our city's history? You can say a pool isn't temporary, but it is, especially when you compare it to something like the cottage that's been watching the city grow for the last one hundred and eighty years. Just in the last sixty to seventy years, there's already been two pools in that area that have come and gone. And it doesn't matter how nice it is or how much money gets spent on it, whatever is being planned for this park next, it will too come and go. This generation has absolutely no right to trump the decisions of the generations before us to preserve or at least keep this cottage standing. And this generation has absolutely no right to decide on the behalf of Roanoke's future generations to take this piece of their local history away from them. The potential of the Caretaker's Cottage and the park surrounding it as a source of income for the city are limitless. The cottage could be a museum with the park around it full of beautiful foliage, paths, streams, springs to complement it. A museum that wouldn't be temporary at all, or seasonal like a pool would be, a source of knowledge and education on Roanoke's immense history as a city. This cottage does not only deserve to stay standing, it deserves to thrive, be acknowledged, and cared for as one of Roanoke's greatest pieces of history still standing. Thank you.
Let me ask you, let me ask you something. If, where do you think, first of all, do you think this should be a pool?
Yes, absolutely.
Where do you think it should go?
Well, the last place for it, which was, as he was saying, it was placed on top of the dump, that was not a good place for it. Right here where the Caretaker's Cottage is, I was standing there, I actually made a video there, there is a lot of noise pollution, there is just a lot of activity. I don't believe that is a good place for a pool in the first place, putting the Caretaker's Cottage aside. I'm not as educated on that neighborhood as I should be for where a pool should go. I just know that as far as the Caretaker's Cottage goes, it should not be a repercussion of needing a pool there because of the pool that had to be taken out thirty, forty years ago when we built it on top of a dump.
So you don't, you're saying you don't know where the pool should go?
Well, I do have, I was asked to come here and speak by somebody else who has all of that, Kathy Carter, she will have all of that information.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nadara Wright, and she will be speaking on the Caretaker's Cottage.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I, last night, I wrote a dissertation, and I decided that I wouldn't give it. And as I sat and I listened to everyone speak, I heard the value in what everyone says about the Caretaker's Cottage, about the pool, and I say, with our history, and when I say our history, I mean African-American history, we constantly lose whenever we paint a picture of gaining. We lose something. It has been our history time and time again, and again we lose to get a pool. The pool never should have been built there in the first... we lose to get a pool. The pool never should have been built there in the first place. You know, it was known that the dump was not removed. It was known that there was still stuff up under the ground that was going to take the pool away. And now, with the history of the caretaker's house, we're going to lose that also. And I have wondered too, why are you going to build a pool where it floods and no one can use, and no one can use their part of the park because it floods, but you're going to build a pool? Now, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but my mind cannot conceive how it's going to be there for the long haul because it floods. I just, I don't understand. And what I ask and what I want from me, because I too played at the Royal Garden, my father taught all four, all three of us, there are four children, I failed to learn to swim. My three siblings did, I couldn't pick it up. Anyway, but I enjoyed the Royal Garden also. I lived in Lincoln Terrace. So I know what was there. I went to the ballparks there at the games. And I do not understand, yes I do, that's wrong, why we continue to lose, our community continue to lose in order to gain. We're giving pictures, pretty pictures painted, empty pictures. They really only give color, like we, like in a crayon box, but it doesn't give the full picture of what's really happening in this history in Roanoke. And that's, and that's my feel on what's happening. As far as the house is concerned, I am with the young man about the history. You know, we're going to take that out to put a pool, and I just don't believe it's going to be there very long. It's going to leave because the flood's there, you know? And so it's not going to be a permanent thing. It's going to be gone soon. And then what do the children do? But that's not the point. Because the point is not about the people, it's about the city. And unfortunately, the city is not about what I see, the people. And that's, that's my truth. And thank you.
Well, let me ask you the question.
Okay.
Where do you, do you think the pool should go to Washington Park?
What I think is that, in the beginning, when they removed the dump, they should have done a more thorough job of doing it. That's what I think. I think they should have done their due diligence to remove everything that was there, instead of putting some on top of junk and gases that soon would rise. That's what I think should have been done, and the pool would have been there now. As far, as far as moving it to the bottom, I don't think that's the best idea. But as I said, I'm not an engineer, you know, I'm not an architect. I don't know where it should be. I have no idea.
The design people said that's the only place, if it's going to be in Washington Park, where the pool could be built.
Like I said, I'm not an engineer. The design people also said that the pool above the landfill was a place for it. So, as far as what, like I said, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a designer, I have no idea on where it should be. None. I just know that due diligence and really thinking about the people who live there and their well-being was not taken into consideration in the first place. And so I have, I really have no belief that now that's been done this time. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that it do, but speaking for myself, I have my doubts. Go ahead, sir.
Pardon me?
You were wanting to say something?
Yeah, I was saying, this council wasn't in place. Right now, we're looking at the facts that have been presented to us by designers and engineers. And we can't build it in a, in a place where the dump used to be back in that area because, because of the soil. If we don't build it there, then it won't go in Washington Park. And you want to move it somewhere else in the city?
I have no idea. As I said, I have no idea. I have no idea, you know?
Okay.
Because designers, who are they? Where are they?
Well, they're, they're there. They've, they've given us the facts to read and work on.
You all went around when the pool was built in the first place, you know?
No.
Did you all see the design for that? The designers? So they were trusted also?
Well, we, I would, I would.
And I'm not saying the council, you know, is responsible because you're not going, you all are not going to build anything. Unless you all are designers and architects and all of that, to know exactly what you're looking at, you would go by what you see on a piece of paper. We're talking about people, human beings, lives, children especially.
But the children are the ones that said they want it there.
Yes, okay, but, excuse me. I don't understand about a disagreement. You know, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that what I'm hoping is that it works out fine, even though I have my doubts. Because in my mind, how can a pool be okay when it floods? At some point in my mind, you know, as we build down, the water's still going to come up. What's going to stop it? And if something is going to stop it, why wouldn't it use prior to it flooding? And even we couldn't use the pool, couldn't use their part of Washington Park?
Well, you need to, we'll get the engineers to make sure they send you and let you know what they're going to do.
I'm not an engineer. I would have no idea what they're talking about.
But you're making some engineering decisions about what's going to happen and how to do it.
Well, are we arguing, sir?
No, I'm just, are we going fact for fact? That's all. I just want to make sure the facts are out there when we talk about this. Because we've had engineers we brought in to look at this and to make sure. And they made a recommendation, which we've engaged the community. This is nothing we're doing up here. This is a community meeting. This is what young people and citizens saying they want the pool built, they want it to stay in Washington Park. But if it's going to stay, then we have to build it in the lower park, right where this house is, that's have to be there. So we got a decision to make. Either we not build it in Washington Park, take it somewhere else, or move it right there where that house is.
Well, the, the decision has been made. Am I correct?
Well, they, I'm asking you, you all are down here to talk about it. What do you want to talk about?
Well, I do have a question, because it's been said that council made the decision. I don't know when that was.
That was when, after the following, the community meeting, the direction provided was to maintain the course, which was that the pool would actually go in the only location. Remember, the conversation at the community meeting was you had three options. Either the pool was located outside of Washington Park, which was an option. The pool was located where the football field is currently, and the football field would be removed because it's not, it's not over the landfill. That was an option. And the third option was this. Council directed us to go have the community meeting, which was, has been referenced. And at the conclusion of that, excuse me, at the conclusion of that, it was decided that it was going to stay in the park and there, and not remove the football field, and therefore it was going to go in this location. And that's what we have been working on since that, that point in time.
I'm, I'm just trying to recall if there was a council vote, or if this was a closed session, or when this was done.
There's no council, there's no council vote because it's an approved capital project, which you've already instructed us to actually take action on. We don't, we don't vote on specific designs or specific locations on anything, whether it be a bridge or whether it be whatever. Once you put in the capital program, then there's a community engagement process that we go through with those, and we'll keep, we'll brief you on those as we go along. And obviously, if there's a direct, a different direction, then council would inform us of that, which is actually why we had that community meeting, because at that time, I think council wasn't real clear which, which direction we wanted to go with that, but.
I just want to make sure it's understood that the vote around that was around hopes that the pool would only be closed for one year so that we'd have a new pool, but council did not vote on a location and specifically choose Washington Lower Park, in my opinion.
That's your opinion. I mean, I think.
That's your opinion. That's not where we are. All right, who else? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I'm glad, we're very, thank you.
I just want to, again, I can't let that just sit. I mean, I have to stress that council does not vote on specific designs of any of our projects. You don't, you, you have a, you put them in the capital program as to what they will do. You engage staff and consultants and designers in doing that, and the community, and you make those decisions. I'll use the Instream Kayak Park as an example that we've talked about here recently. The council is not going to, we're not going to revisit the specific locations of those improvements and ask for a council vote. So I don't want to leave the impression that somehow what's happening here is different than what we've done in the past with it. That is not something that we, that we do.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Madam Clerk?
All right. The next speaker is Allison Blanton. She will be speaking on Washington Park.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. I am speaking on behalf of the Roanoke Valley Preservation Foundation, and you should have received a letter today that outlines our position. I'd like to take this time to maybe address a few of the comments and concerns that have been brought up during this meeting. I think we all understand that the house is definitely historic. It dates back to some of the earliest settlers in Roanoke, and it also has a history that carries forward through the unfortunate period of the Jim Crow era of segregation. It's very closely associated with the Gainsborough neighborhood. I just want to stress, this house is the only remaining structure that relates to either one of those periods of history that are very much important to our city. I want to mention that I had the privilege of partnering with city staff on leading a tour for the Virginia Chapter of the American Planning Association here in the middle of July, that focused entirely on the revitalization of the city based on historic preservation throughout our downtown area. So I recognize, I think we all recognize how important our historic assets are. I am here today to request counsel, and it's my understanding that city staff needs for council to request a new direction in this study. Not necessarily to vote specifically on it. Bob, Mr. Cal can correct me, but I've heard him say that he would need to have direction from council to revisit this. It's my understanding, again, that at the community meeting that was held in May, well, even the earlier input, community input meetings were initially based on the idea of the pool going in the, in the existing location. And so a pool was designed based on that location. However, when the soil test came back and that was found not to be feasible or advisable, they had a meeting in May at Hill Street Baptist Church, and that's where the community strongly said they do want to have a pool in Washington Park. And we are entirely supportive of improvements to Washington Park, including the pool. We just request that City Council ask the city staff to look more closely and really thoroughly explore all of the options. My question is, I was told by Michael Clark that there was not room for the house and the pool on that lower level without relocating the parking lot. Well, do we really want, and that parking lot needs to be improved and enlarged anyway. Do we want that parking lot to be the obstacle in front of being able to have the house and the pool? I know it may cost more money, but saving something that otherwise will be gone forever that's an important part of our history might be worth that extra money. We do not want to stand in the way of the pool design moving forward to be open by next year, if at all possible. We're supportive of that also. But it's just important that in our planning, as city looks at projects and plans for them, they take our historic resources into account at the very beginning and work around those. So we are here to support you all in every way. There's a lot of funding, more funding than ever before for projects that have to do with Black history. Freedom Soil Conservation Grants may be something that could be used toward this. But we really, before the building's demolished, we want you to really look at options. Could a football field really cost that much to relocate at another place in the park? So just look at all the options, please, before you demolish the building.
The next speaker is Mike Pulis, and he does a Washington Park pool.
Yes. Thank you all for having me here today. I just want to share a few thoughts with you. I don't want to stand in the way of the pool either. I am an architectural historian with the Department of Historic Resources. We have an office here in the valley. It's been here since 1988. I am a 22-year citizen of, of the city of Roanoke, so I'm speaking both as a state architectural historian and as a citizen of Roanoke who's concerned about this. Roanoke has been a certified local government since the 1990s and has benefited a good deal financially and otherwise from its participation over the years. The goal of the CLG program is for communities to strengthen and expand their local preservation programs through CLG designation. It establishes a partnership between local governments, the National Park Service, and each state's state historic preservation office, which in Virginia is the Department of Historic Resources. Local governments agree to assume a formal role in the identification, evaluation, and protection of its heritage resources. That's the city's responsibility as a certified local government. In many ways, the city does okay, holding up its end of the bargain. But the city has never formally acknowledged the significance of this building. I'm talking about the caretaker's house at Washington Park. Has never formally acknowledged the significance of the building in sight despite its appearance on both local and statewide endangered sites lists. And how the city performs when important buildings are threatened by development is where the rubber meets the road. It's okay to say, "We support historic district designation downtown" because that's going to strengthen the revenue. But we're not talking about revenue here. Let's, let's look beyond revenue earning for a moment and think about quality of life and preservation of historic resources and the city's responsibility as a certified local government. The house is only one of, the only one of its kind in existence in the Roanoke Valley, and as far as I can determine, in all of southwest Virginia. It's the only one of its kind. There simply are no other similar examples, and it has an important place in African-American history of Roanoke that others can speak about better than I. When the city mothballed the building several years ago in a highly visible way, it looked like a coming soon sign in big letters to the surrounding community and countless passersby. As if the city took the time to wrap steel cables around it and carefully cover and secure it, seemed like an acknowledgement that it is a significant building and that it would be preserved. Instead, it wasn't. This was years ago, years ago, okay, that this happened. So I asked the clerk to pass out pictures of Billy's Cabin to everyone on council. Billy's Cabin was a beautiful, interesting, unique log building owned by the city until it was torn down in 2018. It was out of sight and out of mind. It wasn't on Orange Avenue where hundreds of thousands of people see it every year. But it suffered from long-term neglect and decay, and then finally, it was determined that it could no longer be saved, and it was torn down. If you don't mind, just one more short paragraph. If you happen to see old photos of the city and wonder if more could have been done to save some or all of the wonderful buildings that are now gone, I believe we're going to be left wondering if we ourselves could not have done more to save this important building. The Age of Preservation Enlightenment began in the 1960s when federal laws mandated the identification and protection of federally-owned resources and those potentially impacted by federal projects. In the future, people won't understand why, as late as 2023, the city of Roanoke was still enabling the destruction of its cultural heritage landmarks, particularly when the outcome was avoidable. That's all I wanted to say, but I'll be on hand to answer any questions. Thank you.
Viola Johnson, she will be speaking on Washington Park.
I think she's gone.
Okay. Okay, the next speaker then is Dyke Wood. And he will be speaking on Evan Springs.
It says Evan Springs, but it's about Washington Park.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and City Council, and our City Manager Cole. You know, I'm in a kind of a unique position. My family has lived across the park, from Washington Park for over 50 years now. My brother still lives there. And it's mighty peculiar to me that that hall, that little building sat there for decades, and nobody was concerned about it until we start talking about putting a pool there. nobody was concerned about it until we started talking about putting a pool there. And I just have an observation. You know, I was like 14-years-old when we started living across from Washington Park, and had a lot of history. I've seen things change over the years. But I'd like to say, just like Victory Stadium, I played all of my high school football games, all my junior high school football games. And in Sandlot, if you were on a winning team, they called it the Super Bowl and played it at Victory Stadium. And my point is that I wanted Victory Stadium to stay. My ex-wife gave me a brick, and I'm grateful for that. But they built these two stadiums at each high school, and I know these kids love them. They don't have to go to Victory Stadium every weekend when they play and tire everything down and put stuff back up. They can leave it like it is. And I think as far as that caretaker shack goes, that's a part of history that I'm willing to sacrifice for our children. The kids in northwest need that pool, and I've seen the flood of 85 come through Roanoke. The place that they're going to build that pool was not touched by water. It was not. And I'd like to just say, I think some of the older people, you know, when you think everything has been taken away from you, you think everything that the city changes is a steal, and I just do not believe that. These kids need that park, and I'm willing to make a sacrifice for that caretaker shack that I drove by today. The roof is caved in, they got barriers around it to keep the walls from falling out on people in the park and maybe injuring somebody. And I just think it's a sacrifice that's worth making. These kids need someplace to go in the summertime. Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Rokicki, and I apologize if I said that wrong. Okay, good.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee and council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in support of incorporating the Climate Action Plan into the next city 2040 plan. I think this is imperative, and I, if there was a message I would want to say, is that everything in that plan is connected. In fact, everything in that plan is not just connected within the plan, but it's even connected to the things that everyone has been speaking about with Washington Park. Our history is as important as our future, and I think that we do need to have discussions about what the best possible process to the best possible outcome can be. But the one thing we cannot ignore is scientific evidence. We cannot sacrifice our, any one person's or one neighborhood's health or well-being for and others. And climate change is one thing that connects all of those things together. I very much agree with the first speaker, who was talking about how climate change and health outcomes are so interrelated. My company, Better Building Works, was started in 2011 to address that very fact because I suddenly realized in my career as an architectural designer that a building's ability to sustain human health was as important as its durability and its energy efficiency, and that we can solve all three things at one time. And if we can solve problems for 100-year-old Swiss cheese Victorians, I am confident that this city can solve problems that present immense risk and immense opportunity for our communities over the next 20 years. Thank you.
And I believe this is our last speaker, Lavania Harrell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. It's such an honor to have these three minutes to speak with you. I come today out of concern. My husband and I are pastors at Church Alive International, the corner of Peters Creek Road, Salem Turnpike. Privileged to have been founded 31-years ago, and we've been at this location for 16-years now. We love the location, we love northwest Roanoke, we love Roanoke. And this afternoon, I wouldn't want any of your jobs after sitting here for all this time. It's like, you need the wisdom of Solomon, for sure, and I pray that for you. I am most concerned about several different layers of things that we see happening around our church, in our community, but I hope to speak above that, and I'll explain that. I could speak to the fact that we've had numerous accounts of vandalism. One court case is still pending that I have to go before here soon regarding arson that was attempted. I could speak to the homeless population that moved in on our property recently. We were able to help a couple of them. Others were just bringing drugs and crime into the area. As I know you see, and you've probably heard a lot about on many different levels, we're here to make a difference in the community, we're here to make a difference in the city. But what I want to speak to, and it may not be popular, but it's what I feel I have to say, I must say, is that there is also a spiritual war going on for Roanoke, a spiritual war. And we are still, the thing beyond any homeless, beyond our property, beyond any vandalism or break-ins, and us having to hire an officer every week to make sure our congregants are safe, beyond all of that, there are people that are still dying in our streets, our young ones, that we're most concerned about. The violence, I'm reminded of what the psalmist said when he said, "Lord, confuse the wicked, confound their words, for I see violence and strife in the street." And again, I know you see it, and I'm not here this afternoon to ask for another commission, another committee. I'm here to ask for a day of prayer. I'm here to ask the mayor and this council that within your power and your authority would be to unite this city by calling, I know you've made many proclamations for many things. There's days that you've made proclamations over, months, weeks, that you've proclaimed for certain things in emphasis. I'm asking that, just in the days of the scriptures, when Ezra, when Nehemiah, when Esther would call together the entire nation, I'm asking that with the authority you have that's been given to you by God, that you call a day of prayer and fasting, that the churches of this city may lead their congregations, the prayer meetings can gather. I'm not saying any particular person has to lead it, but it would just be a proclamation that, "Lord, we don't know what to do, our eyes are upon you." And then let us get behind it and do what we do, which we're already doing, but I believe it would make a statement in the heavenly realm where this battle is really going on over our city, if you would make that proclamation. Thank you so much for your time.
We're going to ask, I'm going to ask our city manager if he would note that area, especially where your church is located. And of course, you know I know, because I've been down there, to make a note of that and pass it on to Chief Stokes in that area. All right, Madam Clerk, are we now down to petitions and communications?
Yes, sir, we are. Let's see here, we're on the consent agenda, we're on the consent agenda.
We have approved that yet?
Consent agenda, yes.
All right, we're now down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussions of the items if discussions is desired. Item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion.
Move the consent agenda. A second.
Aye. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Yes, sir, I will. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye. Excuse me, aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is out. Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, now we're petitions and communications. Is that accurate, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Item six, number one, is an acceptance of funding for a drug prosecutor. There are two measures, one a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph on the resolution?
Yes, sir. "A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funding for the multi-jurisdictional special drug prosecutor's office from the Compensation Board of the Commonwealth of Virginia and authorizing the acceptance, execution, and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds."
Thank you. Ms. Cowell, just for the enlightenment of our audience and people, could you talk a little bit about that and what it represents?
Sure.
How it could help us?
Yeah, this is actually a fairly routine item in that we have secured this funding previously from the state, and it aids the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in actually the prosecutions that are particularly drug-related. And so, this ensures that we can continue to offer that level of service.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any discussion by members of council? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
"An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Compensation Board for the Regional Drug Prosecutor FY24, amending and re-eranging certain sections of the 2023 through 2024 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance."
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two is a presentation with regards to the Washington Park Caretaker's College, sponsored by council members Moon Reynolds and White Boyd. I'll call on Kathy Carter for a presentation.
Can you get someone to load it?
Pardon me?
Someone load the presentation?
Yeah.
It's on there. I'll get two seats to make it home. That's all.
He says it's on here?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
I'll count the password. I'm not sure I did. We can find out.
This one here? It's the one that you handed off to the clerk?
Yes.
You should. So, that one goes forward, nothing goes backward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, administration, for having me. My name is Kathy Carter. Now, I'm not an engineer or a designer or any of those type of things. I'm just a person that grew up in Washington Park, lived in Lincoln Terrace, and I'm here to just support the protection and the preservation of a cottage. And I met with Michael Clark's staff, and I met with Bob a year ago, it's been over a year ago now, when I discussed with them the situations with all three of the parks that they're currently working on now. And unfortunately, the Caretaker's House is now in the way, is what I'm told. But this is maybe new to you all, but it hasn't been new to administration and Parks and Rec, because I've been working on this for over a year, and I've only been back a little over two years. And when I saw the park, that's when I started working on it. And I just want to, before we go into the presentation, I just want to make sure that we understand that the Friends of Washington Park Association is a newly-formed association, and what our goals are is to actually, you know, be the gatekeeper for the park and ensure that this park is, becomes a thriving park like it used to be. And we have, we are not in any means wanting to delay or get in the way of building a pool. We want to make sure the pool is built correctly and is done strategically. We do have some issues with some of the engineering surveys where they've done this soil test. Well, apparently, the pool was demolished before the soil test was taken, which was done after the pool was demolished. They found out they couldn't build it there anymore. The second survey was done at the basketball court, they couldn't put it there. The third survey was done at the field, football field. That is the only location, only top, right now that they can put it. And to move a field with just nothing but grass, there's nothing stationary, there are no goals, there are no statums, all you're doing is moving the grass. I spoke to the engineer that done this study. He made some recommendations to administration and said, "These are some of the things that you need to do to correct it, and once you do that, you can build anything you want to up there." The fourth survey was done by the Parks and Rec Board. We said, "With all the years of neglect, we felt that you really need to look at the bottom and, you know, do a soil survey." Well, that tested positive, and it's, you can see from years of neglect that this gas, gases from the dump is now leaked down into the bottom, and it's going to continue to spread until administration does something to correct it. And you need to really go back on the appendix that is in the ECS engineering survey. And am I correct, when we're talking engineers has made these recommendations that the only place for it would be at the bottom, is that ECS?
Correct. Yes, they were the soil survey work that was done by them, and that was the soil borings to help us understand where the limits of the landfill were and what other construction considerations were necessary. For example, as you said, the football field was a location that could go, and then he gave recommendations that if you were to build a pool there, what it would take to build the pool there. So, yes, that's their company.
Okay. And he also gave recommendations of how to fix the problem that has, wasn't done years ago correctly, and now we're right back to the same situation, and you can see how the gases are spreading. We have to take care of that.
Yeah, I don't think that is accurate. I think the landfill was not a part of that study in terms of any kind of migration of the landfill itself. I don't think that was a part of that, that study. It was purely to show kind of what the depths were and where there was material that was found that could be built on or not built on. As far as I know, the landfill continues to stay within its regulatory limits with it, so I don't believe that was a part of that assessment.
Well, I've talked to, I've talked to him, and I don't want to go back and forth, but I do want to say that in my conversation with him and reviewing the reports and the appendix, he did indicate that years of neglect is now on the bottom. So, if you're going to build a pool on the bottom, you still have the same issues because it's spreading. It may get into the pipes and the water, but it needs to be corrected.
But, again, that's not, that's not accurate. That is not in the report.
Okay, this is my conversation, trying to understand.
I understand, I understand.
And I was told that it was in the report. So, I'm going to go beyond that, but the Friends of Washington Park Association actually put the flyer out, and I just want to say to Mr. Wood, because I brought Mr. Woods to talk to Michael Clark's staff last year, and we were concerned about our parks. But the flyer was put out, and that article that he was referring to, that wasn't correct. This gentleman was the first caretaker, Mr. Callaway and his wife, and this came from a newspaper article that he did live in that home in 1923. I do also want to mention that back sometime, the Catholic Church donated $300,000 to the city to actually build and make the park what it is, and it was the citizens that made the park what it is and beautified it. And then I want to address the meeting that was held at Hill Street, because there was only one meeting, and that is not true engagement, that is not true community engagement. We had a bunch of older people and adults, and that's, you didn't have any children. And I know we keep talking children, but there were no children at the meeting. I sat right in front of the mayor. There were no children. But I think- But I think, and I don't want to go into a whole lot of that, but I think there are some things that we need to consider. And there are several options that I'd like to see if the city would explore those options before you tear down this historic home. But before I get into that, I just want to go through my presentation, and this just shows you the history of the property that changed hands from different people, and it shows you in 1923, July 4th, the park was dedicated to the black people on July 4th, and it's been 101 years since it's been in the hands of the blacks. So, prior to that, the history goes back to show you in 1755 that Mark Evans was an early pioneer. He owned that land and much more than what's shown here. And you can see where his son, Daniel, had settled in the Crystal Spring and had built the dam there, and at the bottom of that Mill Mountain was the Mill, and he actually named that Mill, Mill Mountain. And all of this is Evans Spring, all that ties into the Evans Spring that we're working with now. And so, you can see the history and the culture that was before the black people took over the park. You can see that history. And this is some of the track, this tells you the 58 acres that Mr. Evans had. This was his son, and how all that played a big part in the Gainesboro and how it was laid out. That's another view. And this was the tavern and the home that Mr. Lukens lived there, and it was also our first dairy. And this was in 1984, they're saying this was the last time that someone had lived in the home, and it shows you what it looked like then. And the roof was caving in in the late 1980s, and someone from the Roanoke Valley Historic Preservation, they actually called and ended up getting the house wrapped. And that wasn't meant to stay for 20-plus years. It was just to stay until something could be repaired. But it's been over 20 years of neglect. That's the picture of Mr. Callaway, who had resided in his home, he and his wife. That was the current state several weeks ago. And these are some of the pictures of the house. And even though it looks a hot mess, it does, but the house has, is in a pretty bad state. But from the archaeologists and other engineers, they're saying that this house is not detrimental. It can be restored, and it is in a good shape to preserve it. And that's the whole goal, is to preserve it. And we know the floors, the top and bottom will have to be done, and you can see some of the interior of the home, it's still in good shape, and we would hate to destroy that. And here you see a plaque where this used to be, on the top, it used to be the old home, and you see the spring, and then on the bottom is pictures of what Washington Park used to look like. So, some of the potential uses that we want to do with the home, once we can get it off of the demolition status and find a way that we can explore the options to save it. We would like to use that as a community exhibit type museum. We have local artists, we have local authors, and we would like to be able to use that as some type of museum, to put up pictures and things of that nature. We would be good to have some educational classes, teaching the youth and others about the 18th century lifestyle. We need a community center. This area does not have one over a mile. They will have to go, the nearest community center is Eureka Park. And we would like to tie that into the welcome center that the schools are doing. It's now becoming a very diverse cultural welcome center for people coming into the city from all different parts of the world. That is their resource, that's their immediate place that they will go to. And when they look at that park, we don't want to just see a pool and nothing else in that park. We need to make that a park that is thriving, that welcomes everyone from all cultures. And we would like to use that building for, like, after-school programs. And we talk about our teens and our children, we don't have a facility for them to even have after-school programs. We don't have a place for seniors in the community. And the teens especially need a place to go and things to do. So, those are some of the things we'd like to do, and in the gift shop, we would like to be able to sell, you know, things that pertain to the Gainesboro and the Lincoln Terrace, such as, you know, we have trinkets and memorabilia and books and things of that nature. And we'd like to be able to include this, once it is restored, we'd like to be able to include this as an attraction for history tours, we could do field trips and things of that nature. So, there's just so many things that we talked about. I have, I have actually some sketches that would give you some alternative ways that you can design a potential 30-foot aquatic center. I have five different sketches that we can use, and this one here actually shows you how you can work around the building until either we move it, or get it restored, or a way that we can incorporate it into the project. And so, these are five different designs that shows what we can do with a 30,000-square-foot facility. And I'd like to leave that for the record. I also have a record of Michael Pulis'es. This is his formal report that talks about the condition of the building and how it is preservable, and that's what we'd like to do. And even though it looks a hot mess, we can do it. And this is an example of what could be the newest attraction for Roanoke City. We can turn this on the left into this on the right. We have identified funding, and here's all the funding sources. The Virginia Department of Historic Resources, they have identified funding, and that's about $100,000. The National Trust for Historic Preservation is another resource. Reconnecting Communities Grant, there is, the planning is $2 million. And I was already told by this person that the Roanoke City has the planning, they've already got the, started the planning part, but they haven't applied for the money. So, this is about $2 million right here under the Reconnecting Communities. The Virginia Department of Conservation, that's about $4,000, and I heard Frida mention there's more money, and then there's this Community Development Block Grant. So, their funding is there, and it wouldn't cost the city anything, because we're going to be working, the Friends of Washington Park is going to be working with the Roanoke Valley Preservation to secure these grants and these loans, to restore this building. And we want it to be an attraction for the city, not a, you know, not a problem. And so, we hope that you could work with us in looking at some other options. And I'm going to leave Mike Pulis'es' report. Well, I don't know if it'd be helpful if he explained it, but this is his report, I'm going to leave that. And I have other people, like professors from Rafferty University, Hollins University, they gave their recommendations and support this project fully. And I think that's all, because I feel like we've said enough, and I just want to make sure that we are able to just explore the different options and not take down a historic building. I really feel it's unnecessary. I feel like we can 100% incorporate that into our project.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Carter.
I, what we did, we made some body butter, and this is like coconut oil. This is like something we could make in the gift shop that we could sell. And you use the spring water, the spring is still active, the water's been tested from somebody I was told was tested, well, we have to test it for other things, but this is an example of what you can make out of the spring water and sell within that gift shop. And we provided, we provided one for each, for each, for you to try, and if you would, and that's just an example. And this is Sharon, she's going to introduce herself and talk for a moment.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming today. I learned a lot from what y'all said today, so now I'm more educated about this. So, we want a motion for the city council that they will stop the possible demolition of this building, to give it historical designation, and to continue to explore the other options about what could be done with that. And please enjoy this product, which has spring water, and I think that's a really creative way that we could, something we could do with that building. All right. Thank you. Do you want me to take it up there? Can we make a motion?
No, no, we're not making a motion. I'm going to call on council members Moon Reynolds and Twish White Boyd, because they sponsored you, and I'll let them have the first question.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As with any, anybody who comes to me with a request to do a presentation to this council, I'm always amenable to that, and I appreciate you coming forward and showing us the historical value of it. I will also say that I appreciate all of the comments, including the ones that are in favor of going ahead with the process of installing the pool, and all of you who spoke against it. You have to certainly realize that this council has a real challenge, but I do know that we did have community engagement, and I do know that the majority of the folks who were in that meeting did ask that we move forward. So, it wasn't like we just decided on our own to do that. It was based on the input that we got from the community and the discussion that we had among each other to go ahead, because we felt like that's what the community had wanted us to do. So, we gave them guidance to do that, and they've already started moving forward, but...
Are you in the request for proposal process only? Bob, are you in the request for proposal process only, or we're all there?
No, they're in, they're in design on the, on the pool itself.
So, you've already hired someone to do that?
Yeah, it was a design, I believe it was a design build, I'm looking for Angie to see if she's out there, but, so, yes, it is in design. Now, it's in early stages of design, but, and again, you know, this from our conversation that we had, any, obviously, a different direction can be provided. It will result in, obviously, a delay in being able to do the design and likely additional costs, because the design has started with it. But that's where they are right now, is in that very early stages of design.
So, can we make a motion just to explore some of other areas that we mentioned? Now, the football field is one. If we move the football field, sort of midways where the pool was, and we're just moving grass, that's all we're moving. The lights are there, the lights were donated some time ago, and the other option, we could put both the football and the baseball field together over there by Addison. And there's no conflict in schedule?
Ms. Carter, I'm sorry, I still have the floor, I just wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm new to this, this is the first time I ever done this.
And I will finish up, I will finish up, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate you taking the time to bring all of this information to us, because I would not dare give you, not give you the opportunity to do that, because that's what we should do as members of council. You asked to present it, and we, and we gave you the opportunity to do that. But I also want you to know that we did have that discussion, and that we, as a council, made an administrative decision to give Mr. Cowell guidance to move forward, based on the conversations that we got at that meeting. And so, if, you know, we misunderstood some conversations, I certainly apologize for that, but I think most of us that were here and most of the folks that were in that meeting kind of got to the conclusion that that's the direction that the community wanted to go in, and we thought we were pleasing the community by moving forward with that.
By tearing down a building?
But that was, that was...
That was, I was, I was in that meeting, and most of the people here were in that meeting, and it did, that 40 people in a meeting didn't make up near as much of the representation of the community.
But there was, but there was, that was just not the only meeting, there were other meetings, there were other meetings.
Yeah.
And, and I will say this, and I will, I will give Ms. Moon an opportunity, because we co-sponsored, but I will say that if we were to go another two weeks and have another council meeting, we would probably, and I've seen it happen since I've been on council, have another 40, 50 people that will come and say just opposite of what you just said, because that's what happens, and so, we'll have the community going against each other, and that's not what we want. We want to do the right thing for this community, and I hope that we're able to do that, because I think the community deserves that, and I hope that we're able to agree on what that direction should be, because, you know, the black community has, we have enough challenges, we don't want to be pitted against each other. So, I hope, I hope that we will continue to talk and continue to look at the plans that we have to see if we can't move forward for this recreational center for that community. And I thank you for coming. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to recognize Ms. Moon Reynolds now.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for coming. And I did, as my colleague said, we wanted to, you know, allow you the opportunity, and I did talk with you. And I have to too say, as my brother-in-law and my ex-husband has said, growing up around Washington Park and knowing who used to live in the house and have an opportunity to even swim in the pool down on the bottom, we remember that, and then the pool moved up on top. We recall even being at that park. But as we look back, and I was at the meeting, and I did hear some, just like you, who did not want the pool to be at the bottom, but the overwhelming majority, as we know, did rule in favor of it being there. I had even had the conversation with Mr. Cowell over a year or so ago, when I was still concerned when I came on council, that that wrapping was only going to deteriorate the property further, and that I thought at that time, we needed to go ahead and unwrap that house to see what it looked like and to see if it could be preserved, because my fear was going to be what we have now, that now that it's time to make a decision to do something with the house was not going to go in favor of those who was opposed to it. Had we looked at that maybe 15 years ago when they first wrapped it, the community had cried out then. My fear has always been, or problem I have, is when the time comes, we usually are, unfortunately, at the point we're at now, instead of looking back 15 years ago and saying, why is this being wrapped? Why aren't we doing something with this house now? And no one came forward, no one cried out, even though you go through your community, even praying over it. Someone, others in the community need to cry out. And then, when we're ready to go back down, not that I agree that the pool needs to be down there, but the majority of the citizens did rule for that, and I am one who looks at what the community wants. And hearing that and giving the administration the go-ahead, I have to still stand behind that, although I may not be 100% sure, as you were saying, if all the alternatives have been looked at. But I have to rely on the administration to say, I hope so. And so, here we are now. Unfortunately, it's where I feared, that we are ready to act, but the neighborhood, other than the New Neighborhood Association, the Washington Park one before did not come forward, and that's what bothers me when we look at community activists or communities, neighborhoods that come forward. They don't until it's too late, and then they're ready to cry foul. And I'd be thinking, well, where were you at when it needed to be stated? No one came. I know, and that's what I'm saying, it's unfortunate, but you were trying to be the advocate for those that were here. And they did not, you know, want to stand, they were waiting on, you know, someone to come for them and be the one to speak, but then there were still those in the community who want something for the kids, and we have to look at it now as to the sacrifice of history. Unfortunately, we're going to have to sacrifice... Unfortunately, we're gonna have to sacrifice the house because I don't even think it could be moved, but I do ask that we be able to put a, maybe a historic marker there, interpretive to show what was there and not just not put anything and ignore the history altogether.
So even though we have, you know, a lot of money to preserve it, we, you want to just still tear it down rather than incorporate?
Yeah.
And that, and some of that funding could, could go towards the project that we're building, the pool that we're building, and I, I think that it would be feasible to do something like that, is to use some of the funding that's out here for this project and to continue to beautify and build up the park the way it needs to be, because all we have is two, two little sliding board swing sets and a pool, and when the pool closes after four months, all they have is the sliding boards, we still left with a bare park.
Now, that's something that perhaps that could be talked with, you know, to talk with Parks and Rec and the administration about, what other amenities you could probably come up with grant money to put in there. I've been advocating for that as well, that there needs to be more than just, just that little playground area up on top, that the kids do need more. So that's another, another discussion for another day, but I think it's something that is worth pursuing. But to push the money that, just, just to put it back in the same place, perhaps looking at if it can be salvaged a little bit or whatever with a, with a grant, look at putting it somewhere else, the house itself to preserve it.
Will you allow time to do it?
But not in the same place, because the pool is going down there.
Will you allow time to do that?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. You know, you know, we only use recommendations based on what is given to us.
And I hate the fact that, you know, I started this process last year, so I just want to make, make sure you know that when they decided the three places they, they looked to put the pool and then found out, you know, they didn't want to move a football field which is just grass, that you can actually, well, let's just look down, down on the bottom. Well, there's, there's soil leakage on the bottom, you know, and then you got the creek, you got, it's not protected, kids can get in there and run in the creek with the bushes up high, you know, they'll drown, and nobody will even know they're in there, and you got that traffic, you got backup traffic when people are coming from Orange Avenue trying to turn left or right, you know, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a problem. And I went through that yesterday with the high storm, the, 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 the water is over the sidewalks, you know, so what, what, I mean, there's so many things that need to be corrected before you even start to build, and I think EPA needs to get involved for environmental. It's, it's this, this gas leakage is, is not, it's not good. I don't know if it's in the water fountains. So there's, there's a lot of things we need to look at, and we were talking to some of the families that live up the hill, and they're saying, well, what if they start parking on the side and we can't get in because you have very limited parking, no more than about twenty-five cars? And are we still doing one way in and one way out? Bob?
For the, for the park, the future parking?
Just one way in and one way out?
No, there'll be a new parking lot constructed with the pool that'll add parking.
Where would the other interests be?
There's only one way in and one way out to the parking lot.
And perhaps something the manager may need to do is maybe, there may be an opportunity for another community meeting to share all of that, so that, so their, their concerns can be addressed with regards to the parking and...
Sure, once the, we absolutely...
That's what I'm saying.
Right, once the design...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, once your major design...
Hold on a minute. Bob, what were you saying, I didn't hear that?
In, in response to the, the question, once the design is complete, we absolutely can have another community meeting to show kind of what the final design ends up looking like, how the parking will work, what the, because remember, we had several meetings and surveys and all kinds of other things with the community about the pool design itself, not the location, but the design, and so certainly I would think people would want to see then what the resulting design was with it, so we can certainly do that when they're just not at that point in the design piece, but we certainly can do that.
Okay. And have they identified exactly the location?
That, that is what the design is doing right now, is putting that, putting it on there, and, and, you know, one of the things that, as we're talking, and I'll, you know, offer this up to, to council as well, is, you know, the, part of the reason the pool is going where it's going is obviously the soil conditions, it's also outside of both the floodway, the flood plain, and the five hundred year flood, so we moved it over to that location for that reason. The footprint of the pool is, is very close to where the, where the house is itself. We're in that design piece, what, what the original plans were, were to go ahead and get the current structure documented, measured drawings and so on, as we did with Fire Station Seven, so that that historic record is preserved of, of that piece, then proceed with demolition while the design was going on. What, what we can do is we can, we can, we'll still do the measured drawings, but we can defer demolition until the design is actually complete, then we'll know for certain, absolutely certain, that footprint consumes the building and, and the cottage and where it is, rather than, I would hate to actually demolish something only to find out that the final designs actually allow it to fit. So we certainly can do that piece, which doesn't change what we're doing, and it certainly, it doesn't change the schedule, doesn't change the drawings, and it certainly is likely to end with the demolition of that building, but if there's even a chance that as we design it, that that's not the case, then we at least preserve that, that opportunity, so if that...
Yeah, thank you for expressing that, Bob.
Okay, council member, Vice Mayor?
Kathy, thank you. It's, this overall comprehensive history is great, I really appreciate it. I, I had a couple questions. Does anyone know what the square footage of the existing house is?
Mike, do you know that?
No.
I mean, I, I have some concerns that...
It should be in the, it should be in that, one of those that I gave to Bob.
This, it should be in here now?
No, it's...
Well, I can find that out.
Yeah.
It's, it was just, I was curious because it's not a large structure.
No, it is.
So it's not, it's not gonna be like conducive to a lot of major, large community events. However, that's kind of secondary. You know, the, one of the first votes that I took on this council was old Fire Station Seven. And as we all know, there was a lot of passion about preserving that structure, and I went to the structure and I looked through it, and I talked with the people living there, that's not the same scenario here, but it was clear to me that it was not, once you took out everything that had to be taken out to even do a new build, there were gonna be three walls remaining, and I was concerned that, you know, is that really the best use of the resources and for the people that are gonna be utilizing it? So on the one hand here, we have the, the park to consider and where best to place things, how to preserve history. I'm curious if there has been any conversation, I don't expect an answer today, this is more something to think about. One of the things I did love about was how the remnants of the Fire Station Seven were incorporated into the new station. I thought that was really lovely, from the bricks to the wood, to the fireplace mantel, you name it. So one of my questions is, can we give some thought, if, if we reach that decision, that it has to come down? I'm, I'm just, this is hypothetical, if it has to come down, are there, what materials within the existing structure can we preserve and how can those be incorporated? If we were, how can those be incorporated in the park? Whether they're incorporated into a pool building, you know, with a, like they did in, in the new station, they took bricks from the old building and they, they, they built a wall that kind of, and, and they built into it, I think, three emblems that were part of the, I don't remember exactly, but they, the firefighters built a table, a beautiful dining table that was incorporated into the dining room. They, they preserved all of the, the wood that was in there. Now, it was, again, these are different remnants, but I always believe that sometimes you can repurpose elements of a structure in a new way that continue to honor the importance of that structure and not forget it, because I don't think any of us want to wipe out that history. I mean, but I do think there are ways to preserve some elements of it, so I'm just asking if, if that can also be part of the consideration as we're exploring, you know, the footprint question, because I think there, based on the pictures you've shown and some of the information that Michael has in his report, I think there are things within that building, maybe the exterior and interior, that can be preserved, and so are there other ways we can preserve those to incorporate into the park? That's just the question I put out there for us to consider.
And that was based on the conversation that you all had last time we discussed this, that was, that was the direction that the Parks Department along with the designer was proceeding with, that if the building is demolished...
It would help, be helpful for me to see that in any design going forward, because I, I know there, there are ways we can do that, but I just think, I think it's important.
And it's a six hundred square foot building, it's twenty by six.
Six hundred square foot, okay. Thank you, Kathy, I appreciate you being here today.
Okay, thank you.
Body butter too.
Huh?
I said, thank you for the body butter.
Oh, well, you're welcome. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, there are ways to be recognized, but I'm not sure that I jump to do it. Mayor Lee?
Yes, sir.
May I have a question? Thank you, I appreciate that. Kathy, first, thank you for your presentation, thank you for being here, thank you for your service on the Parks and Recreation Board.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing what I hope is the next nine years on there for you and what we continue to see from your work. That's, I'm counting on it.
It's tough.
It is tough, and, you know, I, I, I don't know what the fate of this house will be. You have my wholehearted support, I have been on this side in the past, you'll, you'll have it in the future, but I, I don't know what the fate will be, and regardless of the outcome, I hope that you will keep fighting on every issue that you keep showing up on and holding council accountable. You know, I, I fear that the fate of this house was sealed a long, long time ago, and I don't know exactly when that was. I don't know if it was when the city, in my opinion, did not do the proper due diligence of securing where the new pool would be before taking the old pool down. I don't know if it was when that building was first wrapped or if it was sometime prior to that, as I've been reading through the old historic reports that you provided to us, I mean, they, three excerpts from it, you know, 2008, this is a rare example of an early brick dwelling within the city. 2009, this is a rare example of a hall parlor plan house dating to the mid nineteenth century, most likely circa eighteen forty. February twenty seventeen, this house may be eligible in the area of architecture because of its rarity and type of vintage, but the interior's never been documented and has not been made accessible for a very long time. Documentation would be necessary. Then there's another part. Unfortunately, the building has long suffered from vacancy and neglect and may already be under a threat of demolition by the city. And then the most recent update in June twenty twenty-three, when they were granted access inside, was only because it continues to be under threat of demolition.
This man has been trying to get in since nineteen eighty-nine, but he's had a lot of opposition from administration, and he, it wasn't till I, was that the date right?
No, but I've been trying to get in there for probably like twenty years.
Yeah.
But I, one, I did, just, just deciding to take the old pool down, and we knew it's been leaking for years, the entire time I was on the Parks and Rec Board myself, it was a topic of discussion, where are we gonna put the new pool? And the soil test for years was on there, we're being in one, being done in one place, being done in another, but all of the soil tests were not done until we took the pool down, we had to see what was underneath it and look elsewhere, and it just felt like that that was delayed unnecessarily, and that could have been done beforehand, then we would have been in a position of making a decision that was, are we taking down the house for this pool, rather than are you gonna get a pool or not unless you take down this house? I'm, I'm happy from the comments that I'm hearing today that we're exploring the opportunity of a way to create square footage that does not lead to its demolition, but preserving that house, even with whatever grant money that comes from it, is gonna have to take a change of the way councils have treated that house for years before, and the way this council and future councils will going for it, it's going to require maintenance, it's going to require upkeep, and I hope that this council will take a direction to try and invest in that way, so we don't end up in other situations where we have buildings that have just been neglected and pushed into a state of demolition, and that we don't make decisions that say we either do this or we have to take it down, I just feel like that's what was adequately wrong. Thank you. I, I'm hopeful, my, my understanding was that the RFQ process, at least as of August first, they were in the midst of it, and so that they don't actually have these designs, it's not settled that, that it has to come down. But whatever comes forward from this, I hope we're able to obtain funding, I hope the city applies for funding, and that, that we do something to preserve it moving forward and that we don't push ourselves into a corner with future decisions where we say it's either this or that. I'm sorry what I was saying, but thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear, because I don't want to be asking this...
We need you to do that.
Some months from now, so we're still operating under the direction that the pool is going into the lower park, as we have discussed. My expectation is, based on what we know, that the home, that the cottage will be demolished, however, we will not do the demolition while the design is going on, so that in the event that the design reveals that indeed the demolition is not necessary, then we would take those steps. However, one additional, we're not gonna redesign around the building, we're gonna design the pool as what was already settled on. However, one significant clarification is, there is no money in the budget for the restoration of the building, even if it could be saved, so the items that have been talked about in terms of fundraising, for example, the thriving communities is not an option, the city has already secured that funding, and that's the funding that's going into the Williamson Road project. The other item, CDBG funding, you have already allocated all of your CDBG funding, so I'm not saying there aren't funds out there, I'm just saying some of the funds that have been identified are not available for this person, I just want to be clear, because I don't want to leave anybody with misunderstanding that we're gonna redesign in order to save the building. What I'm saying is we will defer demolition so that as the design is completed, if that reveals that we can actually save the building, then we would, we would do so, but we're not gonna, unless instructed otherwise, we're not gonna alter the design. And my last thing on that is say, you know, if we're instructed to do that, the pool will not open in the season that we had identified, because we have to revisit then some of the decisions we had already made. And last thing on that is, the decision was not whether to take the cabin, the only decision left was not whether to build the pool or take the cabin down, I want to be very clear on that. The decision, we could have put the pool up where the football field was, that was a viable option. In the discussions with the community and discussions with the council, it was decided not to lose the football field, but to actually put in the lower court, so it's, it's not accurate to say that the decision that the council was backed into was one where it was a choice between pool or cabin, that's not accurate, because you also could have put it in another park. There were options here, the options were not what, where we ended, so I, I don't want to create this scenario where, or this impression that we, we pit it from the beginning, cabin versus pool, that, that is not the case.
Is there a reason why?
And those who have spoken today that feel that the black community doesn't have a pool right now, now, this is time sensitive, and Bob put it in a different way, but if they're gonna have a pool to swim in next summer, we've got to move forward right now. That's, that's something that was also emphasized at the meeting, and I just want to make sure we do that. I mean, we've heard a lot of discussion about the black kids don't have a place to go swim.
They don't even have a community center or nothing else there at the park.
Well, if we want them to have a place to swim, we've got to go forward with this project and do it pretty quick, we don't have a lot of deliberation time left, and so that's all we're saying right here, we had to make a decision, I mean, we didn't make a decision, but the community made the decision, and we shared that. Let me, we thinking about swimming, and black kids haven't anywhere to go this summer. We can hear that, we hear that all the time, nothing to do, but if we want them to have something to do, then we need to get this pool built, and the options are, are very, very limited, if it's gonna stay in Washington Park. And if you want to move it south or southwest, okay, but if you want to stay in Washington Park, we have to make a decision to go ahead and get that done now, and that's what we're doing, based on what we've heard.
I just...
Thank you.
And my hope is not to demolish it, just allow us time to look into preserving it, and I, I, that's, that's my, that's my goal, my purpose for coming.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? There, there was just...
I don't want to prolong this too much more, Mr. Bruder, but I'll give you another moment to share something that...
I, I'd say, the city mayor just shared a few funds that I, I know seem limiting, but, but the one fund that was shared on here, which was a recently created fund, was Virginia's Black Indigenous and People of Color Historic Preservation Grant Program, and I would argue that it was created very much in recent history to address projects like this, and hopefully going forward, we'll be able to preserve either this building or other buildings so that our council or other councils across the Commonwealth will not end up in the same situation that we are now. so that our council or other councils across the Commonwealth will not end up in the same situation that we are now.
Thank you, you made that point earlier. Thank you. Thank you.
I was just given the information about the community that Bob, I think, did you mention that that was not available?
Which part, sorry? Thriving Communities?
Yes.
Yeah, we've already secured that grant.
She said that y'all just applied for the cabinet.
We've secured that grant, yeah. That's the grant that's being used for Williamson Road, for the project in Williamson Road.
But it can't be used for black.
All right, we're going to be in recess for about five minutes. Thank you.
And of course, you've heard from some folks today talking about the Climate Action Plan. And Leanne's gonna do a presentation here in just a few moments. I do want to share, and I know you all know this, but for those in the audience and also anyone that might be watching the meeting as well, is the... So today is simply a presentation of the information. We're not requesting any action. It's allowed. It's an opportunity to provide you and the public with the information that's in the Climate Action Plan. That is in addition to all to the outreach efforts that have already taken place. Allow you with opportunity to ask any questions that you might of Leanne or the others that are a part of the presentation and discussion. And then the anticipation is that at your next meeting, we'll actually come forward for action on the items. So again, no requested action today, just the briefing. And I should say, because of the hour that it is, I know Leanne will go through this as extensively as she is able to. If however, there are items that we still need to continue with presentation, we could certainly do that at the next meeting also. We typically, we wouldn't do any additional presentation at the next meeting, but we could if we don't get to cover something today that she would like us to cover. With that, see, that was perfect timing for Leanne to walk in, so whenever you're ready. It happens, right?
Okay. All right. All right. In 2022, NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, awarded a grant to Corillian, the Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action, Virginia Tech, and the city of Roanoke. The overall objective of the Heat Ready Roanoke Project is to promote environmental literacy and strengthen climate resilience in southwestern Virginia by building a cross-sector urban heat resilience literacy network. That includes the public education system, students and families, community health professionals, and the city government. These Heat Ready Roanoke partners are here today in support of the Climate Action Plan. I will be speaking about heat and climate-related impacts found in their day-to-day work. We've got Dr. Theo Lem, an Assistant Professor with Urban Affairs and Planning at Virginia Tech. We've got Dr. Brianna Bennett. She is a Roanoke Emergency Medicine Resident, Year Four, speaking on behalf of Heat Ready Roanoke. And Dr. Cameron Johnson Privatera, a Roanoke Pediatric Physician, speaking on behalf of Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action. We also have multiple Corillian staff members here in the audience as supporters. So I will turn it over to our Dr. Theo Lem and the rest of the physicians.
Thanks, Leanne. Good afternoon, respected members of City Council. My name is Theo Lem. I'm an Assistant Professor of Urban Affairs and Planning at Virginia Tech, and I specialize in urban climate adaptation, environmental science, and community engagement. For the past three years, I've been working in Roanoke with dozens of partners on the issue of increasing the city's capacity to deal with the risks of rising temperatures and heat waves, which are some of the most direct consequences of global climate change. They say like that unlike other weather-related deaths, heat is an invisible killer. Through my work in the community, I can already tell, I can tell you that heat is already an issue here in Roanoke amongst the populations that already have to deal with many other stressors in their daily lives. So please allow me to make this a more visible issue. I've heard heartbreaking stories from the children that I've worked with at RCPS middle schools. A 12-year-old girl who described her grandfather suffering a heat stroke in their home because their air conditioner had stopped working. She was the one who found him and called an ambulance. Another child who during this summer's RCPS Summer Enrichment Program could be described as acting out during our temperature measurement science activity. She refused to participate. She threw her clipboard on the ground. She said she wanted to be picked up. I was shocked when several days later, this child quietly confided in me that her family's dog had died of heat exhaustion in her home. In fact, her acting-out behavior at school is a classic sign of trauma. This kind of trauma in our most vulnerable communities will only be exacerbated as temperatures rise. There were dozens of other stories of children freezing water bottles to sleep with at night because their bedrooms were too hot, of fighting with siblings over electric fans, of noticing that their asthma seemed worse with the heat. There are things that we can do to prevent the death and suffering that will accompany higher temperatures in Roanoke. And temperatures will be higher. Projections estimate that heat wave days will triple by 2030 compared to between 1961 and 1990. I applaud Roanoke's Office of Sustainability for producing this updated Climate Action Plan. In addition to addressing the city's responsibility to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions to mitigate climate change, the plan has beefed up the ways the city needs to respond to adapt to the climate impacts its residents are experiencing now. The risks of increased temperatures and flooding due to climate change are here. The city needs to enable the Climate Action Plan to implement changes to deal with those risks now. Adopting the Climate Action Plan as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan will enable the climate adaptation to be considered in development decisions, infrastructure plans, and the city's budgeting process. Making this connection will also strengthen the city of Roanoke's ability to take advantage of millions of dollars of federal money being invested in climate resilient infrastructures and programs. City Council should consider passing specific resolutions to protect the most vulnerable from the dangers of heat. Pledging to preserve existing natural land and ecosystem function that provides benefits to overburdened and climate-vulnerable communities such as within the Evan Spring area. Prioritizing climate resilient infrastructure investments such as shade, trees, cooling materials, and drinking water fountains in neighborhoods that have been disproportionately burdened by environmental harms. Pledging to improve community engagement processes among climate-vulnerable communities. Improving emergency response capacity for heat, including more distributed cooling centers with extended hours, especially at night, with special consideration for those with disabilities, pets, or other accessibility needs. Creating emergency public transit operations protocols such as no fare required during heat wave. And creating a specialized full-time city staff position to help coordinate climate resilience efforts and lead grants applications and management for federal funding. Lastly, there are already community-based organizations that are doing the work of providing services for climate adaptation in Roanoke. And I would like to lift up the work of one in particular, the Hope Center in Northwest, which is run by Ms. Darlene Lewis, who is here. This year, Ms. Darlene has shared with me that the high temperatures coupled with housing insecurity have caused a marked increase in people seeking water, shade, and shelter. People arrive to the Hope Center on bike or on foot to pick up free water, sit in the shade outside the building, or find respite in the air conditioning inside the building. Ms. Darlene has spent hundreds of dollars a month raised through her personal savings and through donations this summer on bottled water and electricity bills. When I asked whether the Hope Center was handing out cases of water to families, she said no. They were handing out individual bottles. There are people willing to walk or bike to the Hope Center, individuals experiencing homelessness, whose water has been shut off, or who simply needed hydration while getting to where they needed to go on a hot day for a single bottle of water. Respected members of City Council, I hope that you agree that we can and we must do better. The update to the Climate Action Plan is a good first step. The next step for you to consider is how to give this plan teeth that enable it to implement the real change that is needed to do right by the most vulnerable in Roanoke. Thank you.
Members of the City Council and those who have come to listen, hello. Thank you so much for hearing what we have to say. My name is Bree Bennett, and I am a local emergency medicine physician and a constituent of Roanoke City. I am here today representing Heat Ready Roanoke, a grant-funded collaborative project between Virginia Tech, Corillian Clinic, the city of Roanoke, and Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action to build heat resilience in Roanoke. Hopefully, I haven't met any of you in my emergency department before, but my job is to treat people at their absolute worst. My calling is to help and to heal. I have realized that the most impact I can make as a healer is to educate and advocate for climate change policy, as this affects every single one of my patients in different ways. I want to speak to you all about how climate change will continue to negatively impact health and wellness unless we start taking action now. The Corillian Clinic system provides care to nearly 1 million Virginians and West Virginians. At Roanoke Memorial alone, our emergency department sees almost 88,000 adults and children every year. In Roanoke, 10% of people are affected by asthma, 8.8% by chronic lower respiratory disease, 8% by heart disease, and 39% by high blood pressure. These are all diseases that are impacted by our climate and will worsen as temperatures continue to rise and pollutant levels increase. No one will escape the negative effects of climate change. Children, elderly residents, socially vulnerable community members, and communities of color are the most likely to be affected and suffer from climate change. It may seem hard to imagine how something as broad as climate change affects us individually, so let's break it down. Extreme heat and heat waves can cause heat-related illnesses, including heat exhaustion and heat stroke, which is deadly if not rapidly treated. The elderly and the young are especially sensitive to changes in heat. Air pollution can cause asthma in young children as their developing airways are exposed to pollutants and can even cause asthma in adults. Those with pre-existing asthma will have increased asthma exacerbations, oftentimes meaning more emergency department visits and admissions to the hospital. Those who suffer from mental health diseases are affected by rising temperature, as this leads to decreased sleep quality and coping abilities. This can exacerbate anxiety, mood disorder, and schizophrenia. Elevated heat has even been linked to increase in suicides. Heat and climate change affect our community and our futures. Increasing heat leads to an increase in aggression, assault, murder, and rape. Criminologists have known for decades that murder and other violent crimes tend to be more frequent in hot summer months. A study released by the National Bureau of Economic Research by Hellman and Kahn found that on average, overall crime increases by 2.2% and violent crime by 5.7% on days with maximum daily temperatures above 85 degrees Fahrenheit compared to days below that threshold. I want you to think of how hot it has been this month alone, today alone. There was a single day where the maximum temperature in July didn't reach over 85 degrees. I see firsthand the tragedy from violent crimes and have had to tell mothers and fathers that their loved one is dead from a violent act. Climate change is affecting us now, and it has, it is also affecting our future generations. During pregnancy, exposure to heat and air pollution have a negative outcome on mother and baby. These environmental stressors can contribute to preterm birth, low birth weight, and stillbirth. In Virginia, from 2016 to 2020, there have been almost 7,000 additional emergency department visits, including more than 4,600 visits for heat-related or heat-adjacent illnesses. We've also seen almost 2,000 additional heat-related hospital admissions, mostly for heat-adjacent illnesses. I will see increasing cases of heat-related illness and complications during my practice as an emergency medicine physician. This affects every single one of us in this room. The Climate Action Plan is how we as a community are going to enact change, and we need to start today. It is imperative that for our health and safety, the Climate Action Plan becomes adopted into the city's comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I feel very privileged to be able to stand in front of you today. My name is Cameron Johnson, and I come here today as a pediatrician that has served in this and practiced in this community for almost 20 years. I have seen the landscape change of the practice that I provide to my patients because of climate change. I'm here as a member of the Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action, as a medical educator, as a mother, and as a citizen. I'm going to talk broader than our individual communities. I'm going to talk broader than our state and our local area. Warming of the planet will ultimately affect the health of people, period. The global medical community recognizes the far-reaching and predominantly negative health and societal impacts of a warming planet. This is not going unnoticed. UNICEF and the World Health Organizations and the United Nations are spearheading research studies and strategies to safeguard human health as it relates to this climate crisis. The United States is participating in these global initiatives through federal task forces, multiple agencies like NASA and NOAA, or National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, that is funding and supporting the grant that we have for Heat Ready Roanoke. These organizations are collaborating on research with prominent institutions such as Harvard and Yale. The medical community as a whole has risen to the challenge with national physician groups like the Medical Society Consortium on Climate and Health. This consortium represents all of the nation's medical societies and over half of the medical physicians, of the nation's physicians. The medical community does not take this change lightly. This consortium advocates for policy change and educates physicians that rising temperatures are having long-term effects and consequences on our mental health, on cardiovascular disease, on infectious diseases like vector-borne illnesses like from ticks and mosquitoes. We've all seen that. The financial cost of managing this increasing health complication alone is staggering, especially when factored into the long-term picture of rising global temperatures. Virginia, on a positive note, is serving as a national policy leader to reduce heat-trapping gas pollution. The state participates in the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative and Clean Cars policies that will reduce air pollution and help prevent extreme temperature rise and heat illnesses. The Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action has worked to support these initiatives and through advocacy for climate policy and supporting the medical education in medical schools, pharmacy schools, and nursing school curriculums around the state. The VCCA was originally formed in 2017, and in just six years, it has accumulated over 600 members around the state. In our own area, the city of Roanoke has served as a leader in the state with its recognition of implementation, sorry, with its recognition and implementation of proactive building practices and policies to decrease carbon emissions and creating safe zones for cooling around the city. But there's more work to do, and there's no time to waste. Implementing effective mitigation policies not only addresses the root causes of our climate change, but also plays a crucial role in safeguarding public health. The evidence is clear from around the globe, around the nation, around our state, and our local community, that we need to act urgently to protect individuals from environmental changes now and in the future. The Climate Action Plan for Roanoke City provides a clear template for proven strategies to mitigate rising temperatures and create a cost-effective plan for the future. I urge you to make the hard decisions today to protect the city of Roanoke and its citizens for years to come. Thank you for your ear.
Thank you.
Thank you all, the physicians and the Corillian staff, and Dr. Theo Lem for coming and presenting. All right. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and City Council members. Good afternoon, or it's evening now. I don't know how you guys do it every Monday and whatever other day. I'm Leanne Weitzfeld. I'm Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Roanoke, and today I'm going to present a very high-level overview of the Climate Action Plan. On the screen there in the red, you see the time left that we have to limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. That's the threshold to keep things largely as they are now in our world. We've got five years, 348 days, 19 hours, 6 minutes, and 18 seconds. And the clock is ticking every single day. The vision with the Climate Action Plan is that all city of Roanoke residents acknowledge current and future climate risk and successfully adapt resilient and sustainable ways of life that protect human well-being, livelihoods, and economic systems, and the natural environment from future harm. The intent of this plan is to span the years of 2023 to 2030, and it is about shaping a shared future. This plan was made to be accessible for everyone. It is readable and easy to understand. The text sections are broken up, and there are lots of graphics. It is meant to be a usable tool. It is not going to serve us if it were full of big words and lots of science. It wouldn't be able to be used. It is specific to Roanoke. There is a focus on equity and human health. And as you heard the physicians talk, we will see increases in asthma and allergies, vector diseases, mental health struggles and challenges, challenges in pregnancies, our outdoor recreation and employment, our field staff, outdoor construction workers. Our days there might look different. And then, most importantly, I think that's scary to me, is changes in our cognitive thinking processes as carbon dioxide itself increases and what it will do to our higher-level thinking as humans. This will impact every single person in this room and your families. We need to assess with the Climate Action Plan local vulnerabilities and how we can work with neighborhoods to create community resiliency. There are roadmaps to 2030 for buildings and transportation at the municipal residential and commercial scale. There is a chapter on natural resources and how we are going to protect the ecosystem services that nature provides us by putting green back in our neighborhoods. And then there's a chapter specifically on reducing waste. All summer, we've been experiencing and hearing about excessive temperatures and rising and lasting heat waves. As we burn fossil fuels and pump more greenhouse gases into the environment and the atmosphere and the ocean, the earth's systems will become more and more disrupted, similar to when our bodies have fevers. Normalcy is disrupted, and there's no longer optimal function. We need to be cognizant of what's at risk, but understand that we have true opportunity to make our world better, to work together, to create a shared future. And that is why that phrase is on the front of the Climate Action Plan. It is essential that we develop a pattern of long-term thinking and systems thinking in our business and urban development. The federal funding, called the Inflation Reduction Act, or IRA funding, provides immediate resources needed if we only capitalize on them for both our municipality and for the community. This funding was specifically put into place to achieve climate goals. And the climate goals in the Climate Action Plan are broken down into four main sections. The first section is reducing municipal emissions by 50% by 2030, and that is from a 2016 baseline. We need to adopt climate change as a strategic initiative and provide training for leadership and staff, as well as integrating it into daily practice in our business. We need to enter into a performance management contract. That is the only way that I see that we can achieve time-critical progress on energy efficiency in our buildings, and that would include doing solar. The challenge is, is that it is thought of as debt. It is an upfront loan, but the energy savings itself pays for the loan. And it is guaranteed, the savings are guaranteed by the contractor, so that it doesn't take money away from other things that are vitally important in our community. So this is an example of how we hold things in our mind, the long-term and systems thinking. We need to think about this debt differently. We need to integrate climate action into our capital improvement projects' planning process, just like we do the comp plan, just like we do equity. Luke Pugh, the city engineer, had a great idea of setting aside 10% of the CIP funds specifically for sustainability measures, because those are often the first things that are value-engineered out of a building's plan. We're already working, sustainability and transportation are already working with AEP on a plan to change out the street lighting from the sodium to LED lights. We need to convert our heavy vehicles into a diesel alternative, as they're not quite viable as EVs, and hydrogen is not quite ready. Any new passenger vehicles or light-duty trucks need to be purchased as EVs. They are available. We need the infrastructure in place. And then, very specifically, this is new. We need to utilize the IRS Direct Pay Program to be able to get a federal overpayment. We don't pay federal taxes, but it is a new process that's been put in place by the federal government that allows municipalities to get credit on energy conservation, renewable energy projects. That will take a little bit of extra work and extra learning for our attorneys and our auditor, but that is something that could easily be done. For the community emissions, that goal is 50% by 2032. It's a little bit different because we, as the city, have been working on climate action for longer than the community has. The 2032 date also lines up with the expiration of the IRA funding, so that is why that is in place. One of the biggest things that we can do to help our citizens, our residents, and businesses is to provide education on the IRA funding, including workshops, so that they can truly understand how to use it, what to do, and what it can be used for. We need to hire a sustainability business liaison to be able to work with some of our largest employers and other businesses to achieve true emission reductions and to potentially do work groups as well. We are already a city that has the SEPAES program. It is a program that gives long-term, low-interest funding for things like green infrastructure, stormwater management, and energy reduction. We do need to move forward and join the state program, because that has benefits to lenders and to contractors as well. And then, again, we need to promote Healthy Homes and the Weatherization Programs as well. And one of the challenges that Healthy Homes has in the Weatherization and TAP is having enough skilled laborers, and so that might be something that we work on as well. enough skilled laborers, and so that might be something that we work on as well. Just like Dr. Theo Lem had talked, we really need to work with the community on heat adaptations and resiliency. We've got two great grants right now, the NSF grant, the National Science Foundation Grant, and the NOAA Grants. We need to develop specific cooling centers and systems, concrete systems, so that on the heat days, people have places to go. And we also need to incorporate concepts of resiliency hubs into our community buildings. That's a process in itself, but if we start, you know, small, then that can build. Creating a citywide tree planting plan that takes urban heat into effect, and we can build on the existing forestry plan, or incorporate a section of urban heat into a new forestry plan. And then, we might do things like incentivizing tree planting or conversions through the stormwater fee, credit, or other kind of mechanism. And lastly, we need to decarbonize transportation. We've talked about that a little bit, but getting our infrastructure, getting EVs, converting our heavy-duty vehicles, and providing places for commercial businesses to refuel as well with those alternative fuels, renewable propane, propane. We need to continue the good work that transportation has started on the Vision Zero Plan, and that will help to reduce pedestrian and bike fatalities. And we also need to prioritize protected bike lanes, so that we can start to think and do things differently. There's no reason we can't ride a bike to the nearest library, or ride a bike to a park with our kids. Another idea, just as far as trying to deal with internal staff capacity for getting all of this work done, I would like to propose that we create an electric vehicle community task force to kind of help facilitate the Regional Commission with its planning and to help implement community decision-making. And then, this is our equity symbol that we've used in the plan. Equity and climate change are interwoven. And it is vital to look at equity through the lens of climate change. The mission of the Office of Sustainability and Climate Resiliency is to try to use the best science available, and that science is being updated all the time. So that is something that my office takes very seriously and we keep on top of. We acknowledge the risks, and we develop strategies to adapt, mitigate, and build equitable resiliency for all. There's a big push in the next seven to eight years because of the greenhouse gases that are already in the atmosphere. This is an outline of the key items that need to get started right away and need to get implemented in 2024. We need to establish an interdepartmental work committee of key departments, so that we can start integrating climate action into our day-to-day practices. We may want to hire a grant writer or grant writers to help fully capitalize on the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act funding. We need to educate our legal team, our auditor and finance teams, or hire a tax attorney so that we can properly document and follow the IRS rules for the Direct Pay Program. That is a big deal, and that will help us to really implement a lot of solar, renewable energy, a lot of the projects that we need to do. I've already outlined some of the key activities, so I'm not going to go through that again. And we need to conduct commercial and residential Inflation Reduction Act workshops, so that it removes barriers to action. And then, as stated in the Climate Action Plan, we still need to do our climate vulnerability assessment. That's a lot of work to get started in a year and get rolling. We may want to think about adding some sustainability staff. I do need a sustainability program coordinator to handle all of this outreach. A reclassification document was submitted this spring, but I really need to have somebody on staff this fall, because right now, I am an office of one. You've seen this document before, this graphic before. It basically, on the left, we've got our mitigation actions, the actions that we choose to take or not choose to take. And then, on the right, the adaptation. So it's the degree to which we act to mitigate now will give us the results in the future. The green oval circle is ideally where we want to be to keep things below 2 degrees Celsius. That's the magic number, where we're putting in a medium amount of effort and finance, where we're embracing renewables. We have a mix of buses, bikes, electric vehicles, and fossil fuel vehicles. That will keep the temperatures below 2 degrees, moderate sea rise, a moderate increase of severe weather at the end of the century, and a medium cost for adaptations. That is your financial picture that you really should embrace. Right now, we are at the top. We are headed to almost 1,000 parts per million in our atmosphere by the end of the century. Because we're not doing much as a society, we still use a lot of coal, we still use fossil fuel vehicles, and it's going to cost us a lot more later, society-wise and financially. So again, here's your climate clock. This was a screenshot at 12:30 this afternoon. We've already lost several hours since then, right? The clock's ticking. And if we cannot take action, the world would be a very scary place if we go above 2 degrees Celsius. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you. I'll leave you with this one thought, and then you're welcome to ask any questions. The common thread of every mass extinction has been carbon dioxide. We are currently adding carbon dioxide into the atmosphere 10 times faster than the worst mass extinction event ever. Climate change is not a normal political negotiation between different interests, where compromise makes an obvious choice sense. Climate change is a negotiation between human beings and physics, and physics will not compromise. Past a certain point, there is no more room to maneuver, and that is it. What we do now between our 2023 start and 2030 until 2050 will leave a legacy for hundreds, if not thousands, of years. And so, there are big challenges ahead of us, but you, as leaders, can make your mark and make a way forward with the Climate Action Plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, LeAnn. I know you've been by yourself for a long time, and I know you've worked really, really hard, and you've done some good work. And I know that, I don't know what the city manager's plan is as far as your reclassification, but I hope they can do it sooner rather than later, because I know you need the help, because this plan is important for all of us, I think, on this dais. The one thing I wanted to say is, and I guess that was a part of my question, because you were talking about the community centers and the churches and all of that, and I think that's a wonderful idea. I think that you would have to have a coordinator to do that, and we do need to involve the community to help create these cool spaces for us, the splash pads, et cetera. And I also think it's a good idea to put the trees in a park. Huff Lane is a hot park. There are just not any trees over there, just one or two, because we know what happened to that area with economic development. And then, the other one that came to mind was Washington Park. You know, as nice as it is, I hope that when we create this new space and a pool, that they will plant some trees over there, because that is also a very hot park. There are no trees there. And I mentioned those, because those are the ones that I'm familiar with, that I frequent. So I hope that we can incorporate some sort of plan or connect with Parks and Rec. Who would that be? Would you have to connect with them to make sure that we factor that into our plan?
We've already, Michael and I have already talked about it.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, wonderful. Well, I appreciate it. Those were the only two things that came to mind for me, and I was going to ask you who was going to do all this coordinating, and then you said, "I'm waiting on a coordinator." So you answered my question for...
So we need a business coordinator. We need a communications coordinator.
So how many people do you need to fully staff this office in order for us to get what we need here in Roanoke City to make a difference and an impact?
That will be a discussion. But before we start assigning new people here, let me explain one thing that actually we've done. So LeAnn has recently been, the Sustainability effort has been recently repositioned inside the Planning Department, so that she can also draw upon the resources that are in the Planning Department, and also have much more direct alignment with the comprehensive plan that you've heard referenced multiple times, because there's a direct relationship between, obviously, how we plan and build the city and private development with what we're talking about with this. So one of the things we're doing is, first, we'll see how those resources aid in what, if ultimately the plan is adopted, what's in that plan, and then we will obviously revisit the requests for personnel at your budget, because, of course, not surprisingly, we have requests for personnel across the entire, for a really good example related directly to this, is tied with tree planting. You may remember when we had our budget discussion regarding, from the Parks and Recreation Department, regarding urban forestry and their need for additional resources as we actually plant more trees in those parks and those things. So we will obviously be revisiting all of those questions. But first, we're going to try to see what we can do within the Planning Department to add those resources.
Well, and that's fine. And, you know, sustainability has always been very important to me. You know, when you see the red bar there, I mean, it makes your blood boil, you know that it is important, and we do have to act relatively quickly. So I just wanted to make sure that you had the resources that you need in order to do that, from my personal perspective.
I think, too, it might be the job of the Office of Sustainability and Climate Resiliency to lead, but it needs to be integrated into all city departments, whether that starts with education, whether that starts with the interdepartmental work group, but it needs to filter through the organization and become a part of the day-to-day business.
I agree. I agree. That's been my pitch all along. And in the task force, you make sure you call somebody we know in common. Thank you. I think Mr. Paul's a better...
I don't have any very many questions. I think we're late to the game on this, that this is a plan that should have been in place long ago. We've been talking about climate change for quite some time, so I'm glad to see that you have been able to create this plan and do it by yourself. I think that's crazy. I think we need to be putting more resources towards that as a city. So I guess my question kind of echoes Ms. White-Boyd, and what are the things we know that we're behind? What are those priority things that we can get done as soon as possible as a council, so that we can get interdepartmental groups together, so that we can have this become a full government plan? Because we're going to be coming up on our retreat, and this is where the real, you know, rubber meets the road, and we start to decide what are our priorities, and I think it'd be really great to have, you know, this is a great plan, but it's almost one of those things where it's so overwhelming, because we're so behind.
Sure, sure.
So what are those things?
And I will say, you know, there has been a Climate Action Plan previously, and really great work has been done. It's taken smaller chunks at a time, like 10% reduction at a time. So we have made progress. There's just so much to do now to keep us below that threshold, but this work plan, these are the top things that I feel like we need to start getting ready. And so, there's your list.
Gotcha. I think I saw one dated back to 2015, or maybe one prior to that, but the one I saw dated back to 2015. Was there one prior to that?
Yeah, we've had climate action plans and greenhouse gas emissions reduction plans for a number of years, and actually, we've always actually outpaced our targets with those. I think what, we started talking with council about two years or so ago, was as these new national and international objectives came into play, we really needed to advance beyond what we had been doing. And, you know, and again, and LeAnn knows this, because we've talked about it. I mean, it would be a mistake for me to say that, you know, I need to say that we do this largely in isolation, meaning in our region. You know, we are the leaders in the region in this area. Don't know, LeAnn, you might know, I don't believe that any of the surrounding jurisdictions have a Climate Action Plan or greenhouse gas emission objectives or goals. And so, part of what we're trying to do, to your question, council member, about kind of what are the priorities, is we're trying to, what priorities advance us on these sort of global objectives, while also benefiting directly our community members. And tree planting is a great example of that. I mean, it does both of those objectives, because some of these really will, many of these, will be effective only when our neighbors and when the Commonwealth and when the Southeast and, go through the list, actually embrace these also as we move through. So we've been outpacing our objectives. It's just time for us to kind of ratchet those objectives up. I would like to add, actually, another item on here, which is a discussion with our regional partners. I mean, this is largely a plan which is inward-looking, and understandably so, and we need probably to figure out, and LeAnn's kind of mentioned a little piece of that with how we work with the Regional Commission on the EV side of it. But this is a worthy discussion at the Regional Commission among our other community partners as to how they're going to participate in this effort also.
In addition to recycling. I'm sorry, I don't even think our neighbors are still, are they not still recycling in Roanoke County, or have they started?
Not municipal, not municipal recycling.
There's drop-off sites.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think this is a great opportunity for me and Ms. Moon Reynolds to talk with the commission and also use our power on the TPO to start moving us into the 21st century.
I think one of the things, too, as leaders and, you know, having the business liaison, working with our larger businesses, that really starts to, as they create a work plan or work groups, as they start implementing things, and that starts to affect the region in a better capacity. But that economic piece and what climate change will do to the economics of businesses really needs to be something that's discussed, too.
Yeah, it's about efficiency, really. And if you're more efficient, you save money, and that becomes profit. And it's, I feel like we should be there by now. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question. Has politics impeded our discussion on climate change? Because there are some areas in our city that, not the city, I'm sorry, in our country, that, you know, it's the issue with climate change, if it's valid at all. Has that impeded...
No, I think, you know, I can speak to some of the survey results and the public comments that we've gotten back on the Climate Action Plan. About a quarter of the comments, or slightly less, were negative, and they were really negative. But by and large, they've all been very positive. I've gotten some great feedback, some things that still will be incorporated into the Climate Action Plan, but sometimes that minority is really, really loud. I probably had more conversation and lengthier conversations with the negative group than I did with the positive groups.
Well, sometimes I get up in the morning, and I watch Fox and Friends, and that's not the message I'm getting with regards to climate change. I just want to mention that, because I think what you have is good, a good presentation. And I think it's very valid for us, but to see a certain segment of the population saying, "Hey, don't worry about this. This is a heat wave, or this is no..."
Right, and I think, I think there are three-quarters of the population that understand that it's a real risk to human health and viability of future generations. So I think we continue to do the work and keep moving forward. So I think, I think we continue to do the work and, and keep moving forward and, and I don't know, do you ever reach anybody on every issue?
No.
So...
Thank you. That's all I have to know. Always pretty.
Well, I guess just the question I want to ask is related to like the, a lot of emails that we, we got today and people want to know about us adopting, well, and comments we got from the audience about the, the action that we take as council. They want to see this adopted into our comprehensive plan. So what, what is the plan for what council will do with this plan going forward?
Well, I think the, and somebody, is Chris in here? Chris, you can, you can help me with this. So I think, I think the intent was with the adoption that we would do as we have done recently with the adoption of some of our, our neighborhood center plans, with the Gainesboro Plan and so on, that we would have council act and adopt on those. The, the process of going through amending the comprehensive plan is an option. It will necessitate going to the planning and zoning, to the Planning Commission and having action by the Planning Commission, which will delay the adoption of the plan before, before you all. I don't know, I know that was kind of the inquiry from some. I don't know that there is significant gain in it being in the comprehensive plan versus as we've done with the other plans in that adoption.
Is there a significant harm to it being in the comprehensive plan? And also is that...
Not necessarily.
Is it, even if it had reviewed city code to see it doesn't necessarily have to go to the Planning Commission? I mean, everything there is a recommendation and ultimately council makes the final decision.
If you're gonna amend the comprehensive plan, it has to go to the Planning Commission and has to have a public hearing before it can be implemented.
Yes, I see. I thought we had to have a public hearing.
And again, there's no harm in doing that. It just, you know, understand what that will, you know, that will, we'll have to get that in the, in the queue to actually move that through that part of the process.
I'd hope it'd be the will of this council to consider that. I think we know what is already included in there and can start taking some of those steps, but to go through the formal process and to have this where it needs to be for, so it's city plan 2040. Done.
Is that you?
Yep, that's it. I hope.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. I wanted to thank all the speakers who came up. I, I really wanted to commend them for each addressing different aspects. I think we don't fully know the impacts of heat on people's lives. I think we see it and may, and probably each of us do in our own way. But Dr. Lim sharing some of the stories of the students and their experiences, Dr. Bennett talking about how heat contributes directly to increased violence, Dr. Johnson talking about the, the broad-based impacts on children and the overall health of people. You know, grateful for programs like the Hope Center. I know we have some dedicated cooling centers. We could probably use more. One of the things I was really excited about and encouraged by in the plan is just one of the, I guess, strategies and practices is neighbor knocks and cooling centers. And I wonder if that's something that we couldn't activate more quickly through some of our neighborhood groups as a direct way they could help with this, to do just a plan to reach out to your neighbors? Because we don't always know. Someone may be suffering in silence because their air conditioner broke and they just need it repaired. Or they just may need a way to cool. So if that's something that we can engage existing groups with, I think that's a great way to build community and check in on people and continue to support these neighborhood centers that are already doing some of this work. I will tell you, the last couple of weeks, just as I've gone out for a walk or for a run, there is a notable, noticeable difference between being in direct sunlight and being under a tree canopy. And to me, it felt like a drop of five to 10 degrees. It's noticeable.
It's very noticeable.
And so the value added when we plant more trees, when we make sure our sidewalks have more tree cover, can we talk with AEP to work with them to reduce the number of trees they're cutting back and cutting down? Because that's not helping our situation at all. I'm very concerned about that. I think there's gotta be a different way of doing that while preserving the lines that, that people need to communicate. I could go on and on, but those were just some of the things that I wanted to highlight. I'm, I'm really grateful for this. And the other thing was the 10% of CIP funds for sustainability. I'm really curious about that. You know, we tend to look just at the projects overall when we're building that CIP, but if there are some things that we need to look at in the overall CIP plan that includes sustainability and infrastructure, even overall budgeting, I think that's important for us to know.
Yeah, and during the planning process of the, the CIP that we do on an annual basis, the project team that's proposing the projects actually has to answer questions about, does this meet this, this, and this in the comprehensive plan? How does it measure with equity? We also need to do that with climate change as well.
Good. Thanks, Leanne.
All has been said that, some of that I would have said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. The only comment I have is where the, the one, the, one of the speakers mentioned it and brought back to memory for me, a bad memory actually, growing up without air conditioning and only having a fan. And I can remember very well, very, very well, it's only been actually 16 years for me since I've had central air and that's the house I bought. The one before that I owned since the 70s only had a window unit. And I mean to tell you, and I was safer then to allow my children to let the windows up at night when they're doing now. But even having your air conditioning go out in your car in mid, middle of summer, try that. And having to drive everywhere and you're sweating so you can keep being reminded that for us who are sport people, we get in, we leave our air-conditioned homes, central air, get into our air-conditioned cars, go to our air-conditioned work, and never touch outside to feel the heat. And think about those that are around us that are less fortunate, that have to live in it 24/7, as the colleague said, walking down the street with no shade. Playing in your yard, no shade, those kinds of things. So I'm glad you brought this forward and I do hope we will implement it and look to make some serious changes as we can.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of good opportunity to make things better and, and to bring the community together.
Yeah.
And shape that shared future. So, thank you.
One final comment.
Oh, please.
That'll be very quick because I know we've been here all day. But I just want to remind the council that this is very much economic. Our environment is worth more today than it's gonna be worth tomorrow and the next day and the next day unless we do these things that is in this plan. The more we can save our environment, the more we benefit economically in the future. So just remember that when we're doing this.
So Mayor, the current, and I guess this is a question I have, have for you all because the current plan right now would be at your next meeting. We would come forward, there would be a public hearing on, not a public hearing, there would be public comment taken on the plan as presented and then we would ask for, for action. So that's the current plan. If the desire is that we actually go through the process of amending the comprehensive plan, then we would not take those steps and we would begin the process of giving similar presentations to the Planning Commission and starting to work through that process. So just inquiring as to what your, what your preference is as we kind of move into the next steps.
Mr. Powell, can I just ask a question? Because that would require a public hearing if we went the second route.
Correct.
When would you be able to get that done? Because that's gonna even further delay it partly.
To Planning Commission.
Would, would, would the Planning Commission have a motion to schedule a public hearing for September?
So we could do the public hearing in September and then we'll probably come back, but late September or October? So then it would be October?
Second meeting in September.
Probably. Yeah, probably second meeting in September.
Second meeting in September.
Now, remember, you know, you've had the benefit of, I don't know that I would, I don't know that I necessarily would feel it appropriate to simply show up at the Planning Commission meeting, have a public hearing and ask them to make a recommendation.
I know, that's why I was wondering realistically how...
I mean practically, I would think you, you might be looking at two meetings with the Planning Commission, one of which includes the public hearing. Could take place in September, it sounds like.
Sounds like October.
Probably October.
Well, that's what I was thinking. It would, at least, at a minimum, October.
Probably that second meeting.
That would be what we would be. What would be the benefit of adding it to the comprehensive plan? I mean, would there, would there be a way of going in and saying, "Hey, you know, we, everything now has to have this"? What's the real benefit other than going through the hearings?
Because we're gonna adopt it either way.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. It, not being in the comprehensive plan does not in any way diminish the power of the plan. The, the reason that comprehensive plans are adopted through this process of advertisement and having formal public hearings going through the Planning Commission is because it affects people's land rights, land use rights. This plan is not gonna do that. And so we have a number of, of, of very important plans and land use guidance documents that, that we have at our disposal and, and have just had adoption without that formal process as part of the comp plan over the years that are just as useful and just as powerful as the comprehensive plan itself. It's just a legal requirement that the state wants you to go through when, because comprehensive plans often get into the realm of having a land use plan spelled out and, 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 you know, that piece of property is designated for this use and that type of thing. So people's, people's land use rights are, are, are affected. That's why the state puts that in, in that, that process in place.
And I would move that way.
Frieda, have you, you've spoken earlier.
No, that, this is, I signed up for the specific topic and you said I could speak to it, please.
You got three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring to you all's attention that, or to remind you, it's been two years since you passed the emergency declaration about the climate. Last year I did a presentation to you about watershed and flood resiliency and, and the need to, to protect. I, I wanted to update you with just recently, in the last few months, there is a development on Colonial Green where they bulldozed five acres of mature woodlands. Gone. I'm gonna send you a picture of it. It's imperative that you all take the time to make sure that this plan is integrated into the comprehensive plan and your Planning Commission is updated on the importance of preserving our woodlands and flood resiliency. Those five acres that they cleared out is the watershed for Murray Run. And you all might remember the video that I took when there was a storm down near Towers Mall where Zero Brandon was, where you all approved that plan. I tried to give the same presentation to the Planning Commission that I gave to you all and they didn't have the time or patience for it. This is something that you need time and patience for to be comprehensive about how it affects, because you take out five acres of mature woodlands. Every mature tree takes out 48 pounds of carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere. By bulldozing all of that, not only did they turn up the heat that's gonna make people's cooling bills more expensive and more expensive for the businesses that are there, but they're literally adding poison to our air or taking away the benefit that the poison used to take out of our air. We have a stormwater fee in Roanoke to make businesses and people pay when they add extra burden on people when it comes to flood. We need the same when it comes to heat. We need accountability. We need people to understand when they take an action, how it impacts their neighbors. It's not fair. That watershed of five acres is gonna impact Murray Run already an impaired stream and is gonna increase the flooding resiliency for downtown. We need comprehensive. To have this and not have it be educated, I can tell you the Planning Commission members don't seem to have the knowledge and the expertise. Leanne Russell, she's awesome. They need to hear her. They need to understand it. They need to understand this land use of that Mr. Chidmore, they need to understand the impact of the land use. Everybody needs to. It is an emergency. And those woods are gone. Wiped out, bulldozed, on a slope in the watershed of the Murray Run. I thought you all should know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that report, sharing. Very good. The next item is...
I still need to know what you want.
I'm sure you want it, I will too.
Your next course of action to be with this plan.
I'm gonna push for comprehensive plan. I mean, even if not, we can always just go back to adopting it as a document as we want as council separately from it.
I would second that, Mr. Powell, because it, it would only delay it by another four to five weeks, so.
That's fine. What we'll do is we, if, if, if that's generally the consensus, don't, don't need a vote or anything. It's just the consensus. What we'll do then is we will work with Chris on getting it queued up for the Planning Commission, where there will be the hearing there at the Planning Commission. They will come to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission then at that point as we move forward. And again, I would expect probably to look at, look for it in that second meeting in October.
October, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So is that for a vote?
No.
Oh, he's just holding.
Yeah, I think just as long, it appears there's consensus, so I think.
I think we should just go ahead and do it. I don't think there's a real benefit for giving a comprehensive plan.
There was a motion in a second, that's why I was asking.
If we're talking about time being of the essence, all considered, if that wanted to be formal, make it as a motion that we go through the comprehensive plan process. We can put on this.
So if you have a motion and a second, you need to go ahead and vote because we don't all, we don't all agree, Mr. Powell.
Yeah.
Any discussion? I'm not the chair.
I was gonna say, voice vote.
Well, the discussion is, you know, we just need to move on this. I, I don't have any reason to not believe that this is going to work alongside the comprehensive plan. I, I just don't have any reason to believe that, you know, taking two more months to, to make sure it's rolled into it is gonna make that much difference. Because I think we're all committed to this. We're gonna be holding, you know, everybody's gonna be accountable to this. So I, personally, I would rather move ahead and get it adopted and get it activated rather than adding, you know, waiting till October. That's just my personal opinion.
I mean, truly, the rubber meets the road with us and city council and what we budget for it and what we do in this next year. It's not, whether or not it's in the comprehensive plan is not gonna change that.
Well, it may make a difference though, like Ms. Cathcart was saying, with, as far some other projects and them coming in and...
They're not changing the land uses. Land uses are already, like, that's a whole nother process in government is land use. This is not affecting land use at all. So even if, you know, our, our plan is that we want to have as many trees saved, then we need to change that in our zoning code and not in this action plan.
But would that be why that would go to zoning?
You would have to go and change that whole zoning. So like, even if it's in the comprehensive plan, it's not, it's not a part of everything. So you have to change the zoning to have, you know, we can only cut down 10% of trees.
We already have landscaping requirements that Christian can speak to.
So you're saying, so you're saying then, Mr. Spencer, that what we, what Luca and I had recommended would be a mute effort?
It would be parallel, but wouldn't, I, I think Mr. Velosen is absolutely correct. And please correct me, Chris, if you think it's wrong, but I just don't see this as being land use.
Well, my hope is that it would be in our...
All right, well, we got a motion on the floor now.
That would be in our 2040 plan so that future councils will look to this the same way that we are in this moment.
All right, you got a motion, Madam Clerk?
And this, this motion, to just be clear, is to go with the comprehensive plan.
Right, and in the, in the public hearing.
And to be clear, if it fails, then we'll just simply bring this back at the next meeting. It's not, without voting on the plan.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, just, just to do option two as opposed to option one. Right.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, will you call a roll?
I can call the roll, but are we not going with the comprehensive plan to, to make the move with the comprehensive?
This is, this is...
This is comprehensive.
Mr. Pretty made a motion and I made a second and we'll go on the vote. If it fails, it fails, but we'd have made the attempt.
Yeah. Okay, now I'll call the roll. Vice Mayor Cobb?
No.
Ms. White-Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Velosen?
No.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Oh, no.
Seven of us.
Four, three.
Four, three weeks.
So we will take it through that process and, like I said, most likely second meeting in October, we're back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, we ready to move to the next item? All right, Madam Clerk, we ready to move to the next item?
Yes, sir.
Item recommended for action. Item A is acceptance of Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant. We'll be here till seven o'clock.
Exactly. Just think of every rule you get down.
Yeah, all right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I moved the resolution.
Okay, second, all right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant made to the city by the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Any discussion by members of council?
My two minutes if I made, no, even two minutes, thirty seconds. This this is funding assistance that will be used for the acquisition of the ambulance that is a part of Medic fourteen that was approved with the budget. It doesn't Medic fourteen, we've got other means to put it into place. This allows us to actually advance on the the purchase of the ambulance.
All right, well.
I agree, Ms. Sanchez, though.
Well, I'm pleased to see Chief Hoback here today. To, uh, Chief, in the essence of time, I would ask you if you have anything to say, but we're trying to move through this. Okay. All right, uh, any further discussion? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Go ahead, Trish.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Office of Emergency Medical Services through the Virginia Department of Health for the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund to purchase a new ambulance, amending and re-eranging certain sections of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty left out, and Mayor Lee?
Yeah, yes, aye. Right before vote. You got to go, you got to go. All right, item B is acceptance of the twenty twenty-four Virginia Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please tell the paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
The the only thing I'll mention with this one, and I think we talked some about this with budget. So this is actually DCJS um grant that allows us. In this case, it partially covers the the cost of having the sexual violence specialists that we've employed for a number of years. What we talked about in the budget, what is different this time is this grant in the past covered the entire costs associated with that. It is no longer the case. So in this recent budget was approved, we had to increase the local funding to be able to do this, but this is the grant portion of the of the position.
You know, this is something we did a while back. I would be pleased to do that and be able to continue this. All right, uh, discussion, Madam Clerk, we ready to call the roll on this?
Okay. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. A budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Virginia Sexual and this Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant, amending and re-eranging certain sections of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion by members of council? All right. See again, Madam Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, well, not on.
Yeah, no, I did, I did ask, so we're good.
Yeah, okay. And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. Item receipt of the acceptance of a national endowment for the arts, NEA, our town grant award. There's a resolution.
There's a resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Our Town Grant Funding from the National Endowment for the Arts to the city of Roanoke and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
So I know Doug Jackson had to leave, and I won't do this justice, but um I will quickly um highlight that this is. You you all know, of course, in twenty twenty-three, we have been sell we just concluded kind of celebration of the year of the artists. That was from a previous NE NEA grant partnering with the cultural endowment. Application was made for another NEA grant, and we were successful in that. It is a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to which we'll match seventy-five thousand dollars out of our grant fund. And what this will do is take all those activities that have been done over the year of the artists, kind of redo those, but do those closer and into the neighborhoods. So these are now programs that are much more focused inside the neighborhoods, similar to what we've been able to do citywide. So that's what um that's what this application or not application, that's what this receipt of funds will will enable us to do. And I know Doug will be back sharing more information about specifics as we get further into the program.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no further discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes, thank you. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government National Endowment for the Arts funded Arts Art Matters Grant, amending and re-eranging certain sections of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurry, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. Item D is a request for an encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company, GRTC, Valley Metro Bus Shelter located at Fallon Park in the right-of-way at five oh two Nineteenth Street Southeast, facing Dale Avenue Southeast, approximately sixty-eight feet east of Nineteenth Street. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to city-owned property located at five oh two Nineteenth Street Southeast, bearing official tax map number four three one oh one oh one, known as Fallon Park, and which bus station will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Is any discussion for members of council? Hurry none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. At this time, I'm pleased to receive any comments from my city manager.
I will pass this evening, thank you.
Put it in your weekly update.
That's right, that's right.
But the city attorney has a long list.
I'm going to go to the city attorney. All right. Reports of committees, none, well, we do have, well, none, unfinished business, none. Uh, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolution. A resolution approving a revised city council travel policy.
So move.
Second.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please read it this in its entirety.
Okay. A resolution adopting city council's travel expense budget policies and providing for an effective date, be it resolved by the council of the city of Roanoke as follows. One, the council hereby adopts city council's travel expense budget policies in substantially of the format attached to the city council agenda report dated August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Two, the resolution shall be effective upon its adoption.
All right, uh, any discussion by council members? I know.
Yeah.
All right, I'll start with uh Commissioner Moon Reynolds.
I get to go first? Oh, man. All right, all right, I wrote mine down so I wouldn't forget what I wanted to say. Let me just say from the beginning, I do support the newest version of the revised council travel and expense policy that will replace the original policy that was adopted April the twenty-first, two thousand and eight, and then it was revised on September the sixth, two thousand and eleven. There were some things in the policy that I was concerned about. Government organizations such as the National League of Cities and the Virginia Municipal League, it they provide local leaders opportunities to build their skills, as we know, so that we can better govern and serve and advocate for our communities. This ranges from leadership opportunities for professional development to access uh to savings and solutions to save residents and municipal municipal palaties or localities, rather, time and money. Secondly, although the council is being asked to adopt this newest version entitled, you know, city council's travel expense budget policies, I do believe reference should be made to the original and revised versions. They should be noted, uh, which some of the council members don't have, but it's in the record when they were adopted in oh eight and two thousand and eleven. As as most may know by now, you know, I am transparency resonates with me. And the history is very important when it comes to cities' official records. If it is not written in the record, then it never happened. Prior to, and I'll leave this out, but hopefully, once we finish, I would like to uh think that prior to the vote to adopt this measure as it is, that I'll have an opportunity to offer a motion to table the adoption until our next meeting in order to revise the measure to include the reference uh to the original and revised council expense travel policy. And also because you mentioned in the measure, as it was read in its entirety, that there was supposed to be a substantially uh that the policy in substantially the format attached, and there was no attachment, so I didn't know what format they were referencing to it uh in the city council agenda report. So if there was a city council agenda report, I didn't see it. So that's another reason why I just felt that we could have the discussion if we could, but perhaps look at postponing the vote.
Hey, Ms. Moon, that would be on me because I anticipated that there would be one. I drafted this well in advance. Typically, we do, and then a copy of that report, it was anticipated, would be a part of this. The one reason this is minimized. This is council's action on its own policy, and I didn't want to put lawyer fingerprints on it too much.
And that's why I was saying that we would after we go through it and do what we do.
That's why it's minimized, but I did anticipate that there would be a report kind of outline, here's the policy, how we got there, and then incorporate.
Exactly, thank you.
Well, uh, and I'm going to come to you.
Uh, I'm actually, I'm in agreement with Ms. Moon Reynolds. Without an agenda report, I I didn't even know we had this revised version. I have not yet to read it. It may have been in an email, but I typically it was, I'm sure it was, um, but, you know.
He even sent a reminder.
I said I didn't have.
Well, let me let me just try to understand. Why the revise, you talking about the diversion right now to revoting on?
Yeah.
Yeah, the the one that Ms. that Ms. McCoy sent out at least a month ago.
Absolutely.
I was possibly on a on a vacation at that time and probably didn't get it. So I I it's not that I disagree with the policy, I just don't know what it is at this point. And so I'd just like to postpone it one more uh meeting so that I can look at it and make sure that I agree. I know that there were items put in by different council folks, and I just haven't been able to read those yet, that's all.
But I did still have a couple of questions. If for those who have their copies, uh, there is no need for me to reference it if you don't have your copies.
Well, my training used to tell me if you got an item that the majority of council approves, then to table it. Anyway.
But I just wanted to I just wanted to bring up my points, uh, just for the record if I could, Mr. Mayor, since I did go through through it, and uh that way they would be on record. And that was the one under the personnel part where it says council members are treated as full-time employees and are eligible for associated benefits. And then it goes on to talk about including, you know, the retirement as well as medical and dental. I just wanted to make sure, um, if there needed to be some more uh wordsmith in here, because we know if you're treated as a full-time employee, you're also eligible for your, which I know council don't, I know this, but sick leave, vacation, life insurance, et cetera, if you're going to be treated as a full-time employee. So I didn't know if that needed a little bit more wordsmithing to be clear that, you know, another council, two, three, four years from now, may look at that and say, don't we supposed to have additional benefits? Because you said we're treated as full-time employees.
I don't know that 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 those references particularly makes sense. I mean, sick leave for were required to be at this meeting for council. I don't know that there's other time of work that's required other than certain meetings. And um you can have excuses for not being there, but if you miss a certain amount in the charter, I'm just not sure.
Right, I'm just making the point because you're putting in here treated as in writing. I know that, you know that, but it's because the policy is referencing it as such. I'm just saying that to be clear and not to be assumption.
And of course, the lawyer's counterpoint would be council members are paid whether they happen to be here or not.
Be there or not, that's true.
But council members don't accrue sick time.
Right, right.
That can be.
That's true. So I'm just saying, don't put in there as treated as full-time employees. That's where I was going with that. And then, uh, under number. Under number two, and because you don't see this one, but I know you had some concerns about this as well as a couple of other colleagues. Number two talks about allocating our operating fund, and then it goes on to say that uh the money would be here, um, routine travel, for example, to go to travel to Richmond. And it would be a a part of individuals' annual budget. Now, as we know, and I'm just going to cut through the chase, we've already adopted the budget for this year. And the council's budget is, uh, what, uh, Suzie, you may have to help me with that. You have, um, training and development?
Yes, yes.
Twelve hundred dollars? Is it twelve hundred?
It's three hun- three thousand six hundred.
Oh, it's three, okay.
Three thousand six hundred fifty dollars for out of business.
And then the business mill account is seven hundred dollars. And so according to this, it is saying that, uh, based on that and looking at the travel for this year alone, if council members go over that, they cannot go, they can't go anywhere other than one or two for this year.
Well, that means you will have to discuss that with the council as a whole, and mayor would have to approve any additional overages. So before we would take care of the overage, our office, my office would do that. But now, since everyone seems to be going over, we need to get some kind of control in this. I believe this is why we I know this is why we are trying to put some guidelines around.
Right.
Round travel, so everyone will understand that they do need to, we we need to have some restraint sometime or get permission, and then I will be covering my own, so.
Or if we got a budget, monitor the budget with your travel.
We do that.
And that's what I'm saying.
Right, and that's what I'm saying here.
That's what we ought to do.
That's right.
We should do that.
Right, we should be able to monitor, keep ourselves in check without having to rely on the clerk to do it for us.
And then I then we do send reminders if you go over. So everyone clearly sees that we're over. It doesn't mean to keep going and keep spending. We just need someone to put a control on it and maybe. We just need someone to put a control on it, and maybe, and that's why this clause is here. So mayor or someone else can approve it?
I'll be the bearer of bad news, that's not a problem with me. I'll be the bearer of bad news. I want to make sure that we can get to that point, where we stay within our budget.
Right.
And, you know, you can go, but it's gonna cost you. But we want everybody to stay within our budget on this travel.
The only thing I was using there is pretty tight with the one for NLC, and that's really beneficial to all of us. I have learned so much.
Right.
But when you attend that, you can't attend anything else. In fact, you barely can attend that one without, without you paying for your own parking and your meals. But I think any new council member, even some of those, it's just, that's the only one that I think that I learned a great deal from. And I just don't think that we have allotted enough for that particular one.
And I agree, because those trips now are more expensive. Travel is more expensive, and so when you go on just those two trips, you've expanded your budget.
And that's what it should be really set up for, is just those main two conferences, whatever that coverage is, that's pretty much, or the, and at three thousand and six hundred dollars, it's not gonna cover you for VML and for the National League of Cities.
Now, I'm-
You're gonna be in the red this year.
Well, I'll have to say, when we are doing our budget planning for the year, I did plan for much, much more, but this is what was allotted from the finance committee. So I had to accept that, so I'll give pass that on to you. This is what that committee has allotted us, I ask for more.
And that's what they gave us, and that's the best you can do, that's right, I understand.
Well, and so, isn't that more of a, like, the annual budget discussion then about how much we have versus what this travel policy is currently here right now? And I do know I'm speaking as a person who's, and because I give reports, we see everything. I've only spent like ninety-eight bucks or something of my own, but I haven't really saw it going to any conferences yet. Also, I thought with NLC that preference is given to newer council members? Is that what the policy says?
That's the other thing that I have an issue with on the policy as well.
I think if you're a new council member, VML is one that I think you should attend more so than going to the national. You could get lost at the national in NLC. Because you don't, a lot of stuff they deal with or give, is based on what you're doing locally in your state. So I think you need, to me, in my opinion, you need to have, a new council member should be a part of the Virginia Municipal League Conference, which this year is down in Norfolk. But before you head out to Atlanta, San Antonio, or LA, you know.
That's the whole thing too, Mr. Mayor, you hitting the nail on the head. It might be, you know, you might be able to drive, you know, in Norfolk. But then, again, it may be in Atlanta or San Diego, you're not driving out there. And so it varies from year to year as to where it's going to be. And I guess, would you know that ahead of time, Ms. McCoy? Where it's going to be?
Yes, yes, we will know before we make the announcement.
So we should be able to budget.
But because we're already in this budget, see, the money has already been set. According to this policy, it's saying funding for attending to any conference must be allocated during the annual budget process. Right. And we're already in this year's budget. And I'm all, I'm comfortable, because I'll just put it out there, I pay for most of mine and coverage, so I can try to stay within reason. But at the same time, if you spend that three thousand six hundred by December, you're looking at the red, pretty much. And it's a misconception when you're looking at that, because if you allow one to go and another one don't, we have different expertise, and you have different types of workshops that you feel that would benefit the public when you come back here. Just what I read in my, you know, in my open statement about professional development and what you're trying to do for the municipality here. So that's just, and based on what Ms. McCoy gave us to check off, I think the total was close to ten thousand versus three thousand six hundred. And again, not everyone has money in their own coffers to really look to pay out of their pocket, so to speak. But they're trying to benefit the public in their service.
And I think, since, since my neighbor here kind of threw the budget committee a little bit under the bus, so. I think what the council member just mentioned, I mean, if you actually, if council traveled to what was checked up on the boxes that the clerk provided, it was, it was over ten thousand dollars per council member. I can tell you that is well in excess of what your professional staff actually receives in terms of professional development. Our engineers, our planners, others do not receive that kind of funding. So that was part of what the budget committees, I'm thinking was going into it. But I do think that, you know, ultimately, it probably makes sense as we go into this next budget year to look at a way in which we could at least ensure with the budget that every council member is able to attend VML and National League of Cities. If you chose not to do National League of Cities and identified something else, that, you know, that would be at the discretion, but at least kind of set the benchmark for those two.
And that's what it has always been when I was in the administration. It was pretty much VML and the National League of City and nothing else.
I think that's appropriate.
That was a given, and I think that was part of the policy, travel policy, that was specifically mentioned, was those two. Just costs had gone up, like everything else.
Right, even since we budgeted, they've gone up.
But the mayor can also just approve. There's a lot of things, networking and other things that we find at these conferences that we can bring back that safe money, like the CVS plan that Ms. Sanchez Jones brought back. So it's not necessarily just about our professional development. It's also networking, seeing what other things are there for us to bring back to our city.
But the mayor can just approve that then when we come into that situation. And so, you know, this is a travel policy, we may not be in every year, you know, setting it up so that council can go out where they need to go. There may be years where it's tighter than it has been, and.
And what we would do in that scenario is if someone who had exhausted their expenditures and there was a conference opportunity and they went to the mayor, most likely what would occur is the mayor and I would have a discussion about what the balance in our contingency account is to be able to cover that expense for him to make that. So that, that's how that policy, effectively, that's how the policy would work. Obviously, that would all have to take place before the travel, in order to make that.
So if we adopt the current policy, then we would still be okay? We don't have to table it if we're in agreement?
That, I mean, that's up to you or whether you feel comfortable with the policy.
So I just wanted to speak because-
You got a very conservative mayor, now I realize that.
Thank you, Mayor, for watching our followers.
I also wanted to just second what Ms. Moon Reynolds was talking about with Section D about conferences, because it states that, you know, that there will be preferences in allocating to different members and that it would rotate. You know, one of the things that I learned when I went to, I went to the Capitol, the CCC NLC event.
Congressional City Conference.
Yeah, Congressional City Conference, thank you. You know, it's not something that should be rotated amongst us because then you may learn something at one thing and create a connection, and then they'll say, oh, I'll see you at the next NLC, and you're never gonna see them again because there's no idea as to who's gonna be going and who's not. So I do agree with the idea that VML and NLC should be pretty standard for us. And then, you know, if you want to rotate for other conferences, I could understand that. But those two are very, are good approval, yeah.
Well, I was on council one time, there was a way. I mean, you didn't go every year to the NLC. It was who went this year, how many, and you had to, you had to really convince. At that time, the mayor, I'm not gonna tell you who the mayor was, but you had to convince folks if you should go each year to the national.
Some people think it's an unrealistic expectation, Mr. Mayor.
Well.
Especially when you're council, I want to say.
I'll say this, when I get to the point where I'm gonna consider, if you go over, I'm gonna see where your travel plan, where you've been.
Where you're going. Also, this policy does allow that if someone doesn't spend their money, that you can ask so politely another council member to let you have some of that.
It's often, it's always a part of the regional policy.
That's a, that's a good statement, Ms. Pretty. Ask politely that council member, politely.
Mr. Pretty, how much money could I have from your leftover funds?
Your leftovers.
All right.
And the other one, Mr. Mayor, I had was under age. And this one was where it says as government and dignitaries, council members are expected to represent the city at events hosted by charities and other public service-oriented organizations. The cost of admission to such events will be paid by the city to the extent provided for within each council member's budget. And it just went on to talk about if you got the invitation and blah, 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 blah. Now, one of the things that for me, sometimes you get a printed invitation to an event, and it may be for a hundred and twenty-five dollars to attend. And a council member may say they want to go, but they're not representing the city in the sense of being a speaker, but just wanting to go because.
Of being a part of the community.
But I just feel that, I just think perhaps a percentage, a cap should be put on that hundred and twenty-five, that if it's seventy-five or more, then pay for it out of your own pocket, because you have to weigh that this is taxpayers' money. If I had to pay the hundred and twenty-five dollars, would I go? Not because I've got a hundred and twenty-five in my seven hundred, that I'm going. But look at maybe a percentage that if you get an invitation to a charitable fundraiser, because most of them are fundraisers, and you're looking at, one was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And there you go, and you go, I'm not going to that. But I just feel that we need to be mindful if we're looking at being good stewards, even down to those that are local, that it's all right to represent, but should we look to pay for a portion of that out of our own pocket than putting the whole amount on the city?
Or just pay for it ourselves.
Or pay for it yourself, because you get paid an annual salary, pay for it yourself. So that's where I'm coming from on the age, that maybe, again, a little bit more wordsmithing on that.
Well, and what I'm hearing is if we're in agreement with it, Peter just needs to see the revised edition, and we need to just table it for that, table.
Well, and not only that, what Ms. Moon Reynolds just mentioned, you know, perhaps we should pay for our own if we want to go to something outside of council, you know.
Unless you're the speaker, you know, that kind of thing, because we can all go, but you end up spending a hundred and seventy-five times seven when you're just sitting at a table, at a fundraiser, when it really is not benefiting anything you're gonna get to bring back to the public, except for you to eat a meal on them. Unless it's something like what Mr. Cow would do, such as Center in the Square, we get a table, so it's already taken care of because of.
We're thinking of things like.
SCLC or.
Yeah, SCLC.
Yeah, those are okay, see, where the money, the amount is low enough, that's fine. But when I look at junior achievement and they charging a hundred and seventy-five dollars, they sending you the invitation, you know, junior achievement, and not to put junior achievement down, so don't come after me. But a hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's a fundraiser.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's a way, and this would not be perfect in doing it, but there, surely there's a way to kind of itemize things like the, you know, the chamber, the Chamber Annual Meeting, the NWACP, the SCLC.
Yes.
Maybe actually generating kind of a list of those and saying kind of those are covered. Because there are a number of other events everyone is invited to that really aren't in that core group.
That's correct.
Ultimately, would be you all having to decide what falls into that core group of those. But that might be worth kind of doing to see if those could, even if not official, just kind of in that policy to kind of itemize those.
You're saying what I'm trying to get to. There are the regular ones that we go to that are reasonable price that you want to support. But then you have those others that are fundraisers at the Hotel Roanoke, and we get the invitation. And you, you know, you say, I wanna go, and you send it to the city clerk, but it doesn't benefit the city, you are the one that's going.
Yeah, so maybe there's a way to do.
But you're going at the taxpayers' dollar.
Yeah, maybe there's a way to do that is to generate some kind of list that then the clerk could use if that request was made.
Yeah. My understanding is that most, I thought, the only ones that were really approved were ones that the clerk sent to us asking for our attendance, whether or not we were going.
Well, the, the.
So they're real, but they originate there normally, is what I'm saying.
Like, for example, even though, you know, the cost, there is no cost with it for the Center in the Square one, but that would be an example of that kind of thing, that if we, if there was an event, the Chamber Annual Meeting, those kinds of things, those typically would go from the clerk or from myself saying, you know, this is the annual meeting, we'd go out. But I don't know that it would automatically capture all of those. There might be some that we wouldn't do. Most of what, most of what the council member is talking about, you would know about, we wouldn't. You would get a direct invitation from whomever, Junior League or Junior Achievement or Restoration Housing, I mean, there's a whole host of those. Habitat might do those. That's why it might, it might be beneficial to create that kind of list to have at least something everybody agrees on that, you know, these are the ones that would be covered. They still come out of your budget, they would just be covered.
Right, right.
These are actually, even if money was available, are beyond what you feel comfortable as agreeing.
I just think you just need to use a little sound judgment on a hundred and seventy-five dollars versus a seventy-five dollar.
Or thirty-five.
Thirty-five, you know, and I just, I just never have believed in it.
All right, what's your pleasure here?
So my understanding is we're looking at potentially more revisions. So my understanding is the only revisions that were done between the first version that was sent out and the second version, separate from our 2011, 2008 versions, were the word periodic at the very end was changed to annual to make clear that we're getting annual audits and not just periodic, when's periodic? I really don't even think there was much else, and I'm not saying about the clerk. I indeed, about conferences.
Well, and then, Ms. Moon Reynolds wanted to.
I can just get with the clerk.
No, I'm talking about what was between the first one and the second one that got.
I'll just get with the clerk and share mine, and she can share it back out with my changes and highlight them in red or whatever.
Send it out to all of us.
And then we can start back again and do that. And the last thing is under the audit is what Mr. Pretty just brought up. I just think to ensure compliance with this policy, audit results should be submitted to, and it says the mayor, city manager, and the city clerk. What about the results being submitted to the entire council? So we all get to see.
I have a question, because I submitted the same recommendation. I would expect that they automatically will go to those three, but otherwise, members of the audit committee are going to get anything that's done in an audit. And then ultimately, that will go to council, or anyone on council can access to it. I just didn't know if it was necessary to put that language in here, if there was a reason to leave it out, or just duplicative.
Sometimes being duplicative is okay, but that's your choice, your policy.
Yeah, but I think because there's only four members on the audit that get it, the other three don't, I just think it would just be for fairness, just include the council members when all gets it.
Now, I would have to correct that, Ms. Moon Reynolds, you do get it, even.
Well, we just started recently, let me back it up, over a year or so ago, we were not. Let me correct myself, yes, ma'am, you're correct now. We do, Drew does send it out to, but I just thought this for the record, to show it here.
Okay, I was supposed to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, no, no.
We asked them to please send it out to all of us.
Yes, that is correct, that is correct. But that's something, I'll just leave that in here, and if you take it out, that's fine. But I'll just leave it on mine.
So as we approach the eleventh hour.
That's right, for real, for real.
Yeah, I've been there, so.
Almost, yeah, almost fourteen hours.
Fine, I can on it now, but it seems like there's a.
I'm getting ready to make that motion.
To table it in its entirety, or is it just?
Can I make my motion?
It hadn't been made, I just wanted to make that.
Yeah, now that I'm, now that, like I said, now I would like to offer, I guess it's a.
Substitute amended.
No, motion to table.
Because we had the other one before it, I just wanted to go through it. To offer a motion to table the adoption of this measure until the August 21st council meeting. I do have my date right, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in order to revise the measure to include, and I just said reference to the original and the revised council expense and travel policies.
So we don't have to make the other updates?
That's what I mean, all of that.
This would go first, and then if it fails, then we vote on the substantive motion.
We said.
It includes that, yeah.
I should move in second, Madam Clerk, that we'll table this, so we need a vote on it.
All right, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
No.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye.
We're asking, Madam Clerk, would you like for us to send our additional comments or recommendations?
I think we could all send them at once and back and forth, back and forth.
Yes, everybody send it back to me, and I will make these revisions, and I will talk to the city attorney and the municipal auditor.
Yes.
Regarding these changes.
Yes.
So we can all be on the same page.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Also, Suzy, thank you for putting this together, it's a long policy.
It is.
That was nice.
Yes, thank you so much, and I did read it, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right.
I'm ready for the next thing.
I don't know my loving ad motion in miscellaneous business inquiry or comments by the mayor and or members of council. Are there any inquiries or comments? All right, add on the truth, vagueness on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. But before we do that, we want to come out and close the meeting.
Before we go to this, I'd like to go back to just inquiries and comments. comments. Um, if it is appropriate, uh, just, just very quickly, I received an email from someone who, um, is objecting to, uh, me being present for what they consider a protest this morning outside the Roanoke County Courthouse, sitting in solidarity with people who, um, were charged with trespassing over a situation that's occurring in Roanoke County, believing that it does not show that I am serious in the office that I hold. I would just like to publicly say that I am serious in the office that I hold, um, and I can do as I please for what, uh, whatever I support. But I thank them for their email. This is, I think this is in everybody. They don't say my name, but-
No, he was here, twenty first.
Thank you for that time.
All right.
I move, with respect to, with respect to the closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of city council in attendance.
Second, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. All right, uh, now, as we get back to vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council, I'm gonna call on the vice mayor to share with us those appointments and reappointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to the Economic Development Authority, we reappoint Braxton Knaff, uh, for a four-year term of office. For the Roanoke Civic Center Commission, we are reappointing Christopher Carter, um, for a three-year term, and residency waiver is required, and Sam Lionberger to a three-year term. For the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, we are reappointing Karen Walker for a term. For the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center Commission, we are appointing Gwendolyn Coleman, uh, to fill the unexpired term of office for Stephen Martin, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, for the Youth Services Citizen Board, we are appointing Danny Clausen, um, for a three-year term. And those are all the appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, when the clerk calls a roll, if you're in favor of those appointments